Alright, so, Councilor Richter, did you have something prior to the meeting?
Uh, well, no, I just had my hand up because I wanted to um, um, do an amendment to the minutes as well as to vary the agenda for special close.
Okay, sounds good, so.
Okay, who's got something in the background going there? There's a buzzing sound.
Okay, if everyone can just turn their mics off, um, that will help. Okay, so I'm gonna bring the regular meeting of council to order. And first item is the adoption and receipt of the agenda items. Have a motion please.
Move Ferguson.
Ferguson moves it, second by Councilor Long. And, Councilor Richter, you're on the next item, so. I'll call the question, all those in favor? Who carries? And next would be a motion to adopt the minutes of the regular council meeting of July thirteenth, twenty twenty.
Move. Second Ferguson.
Second by Council Ferguson. Any errors or omissions, Councilor Richter?
Uh, yes, I believe the minute, uh, the, it should be the minutes of the regular council meeting of July thirteenth as amended, because there were some amendments that I brought forward in the previous meeting. So I'd like the, I'd like it to read as amended. And I'll make that amendment if you want me to.
I think that's. Ms. Bowers saying it's not, it's not an issue, so, no problem, we can change that. So that's, um, that was all on that, I'll call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Who carries? And I need a motion to resolve a special close for items on the agenda and on table. I have a motion please. Councilor Long moves, Councilor Whitmarsh seconds. Councilor Richter, you have an item to add?
Sorry, I'm just getting my hand up and for the next one, sorry.
So on, on the special close, do you have an issue, um, question? You're not hearing anything, I'm gonna call the question, all those in, uh, Mr. Backman?
I, I believe it's to vary the order of the agenda, I think that's what the intent was.
The order, but we can do that at once we're in the code.
As long as she knows that correctly.
Alright, there's a, um, to vary the order of the agenda, we can do that once we, uh, do the agenda in code. I'll call the question, all those in favor? Who carries? So now we'll resolve the special close meeting, and we can just give, um, a few minutes until we're here. So this is okay, thank you.
Test one, two, three.
Alright, good afternoon, now we can be in the regular afternoon meeting of the council. Councilor Long, your hand is up, do you have a question, except from prior?
I have an item, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay, just a, just a piece of advice for you, I'm gonna be declaring a conflict of interest on items F five and F six.
We'll give you time for that. Right, uh, so now we'll move on to delegations, and we have Mr. David Foley, from the Density Development Corporation.
And you're on.
Great.
Welcome, welcome here, you'll have five minutes to present, and, uh, you can just provide us with your name and.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship, uh, my name is David Foley, uh, from Density Development Corporation. Um, I'm here to request council to give consideration to, uh, waiving the Carvath Greenway amenity charge for our rezoning applica, uh, rezoning proposal for our two-building, uh, flex employment light industrial development, uh, located at one nine seven zero eight eighty-six avenue. Uh, it's also item G point two on today's agenda. During the review process, uh, we were advised by township staff that the Carvath Greenway amenity charge was going to be applied to our light industrial project. Um, the, the cost of this amenity charge, uh, is estimated to be three-quarters of a million dollars. For, for comparison, the development cost charges for our application is a half-million dollars. Uh, with a, with a, an amenity charge that's fifty percent greater than the DCC, uh, we find this to be a disproportionate amount for a non-residential project, uh, that's, uh, low-density and employment-generating, and is also creating a significant economic burden, um, as to its feasibility for, uh, for a project of this size to absorb. Uh, making the situation more tenuous is the current pandemic and the economic impact it's having on, on our project. Uh, as such, I'm respectfully requesting that, uh, council give consideration to waiving the, uh, the amenity charge as allowed in item four-point-six of the Greenway policy, which would allow us to deliver the project and support employment creation in the township. In making this request, um, I would like to highlight to council, uh, some details about our application and our project design and the quality of the project we are delivering. Um, there are three water courses that cross the property. Uh, we are preserving two-point-five-eight acres of mature riparian habitat, which equates to about forty-four percent of the total property, total area of the property, and is quite, is considerable for a light industrial, low-density project. The water courses and the habitat will be protected with a restrictive covenant that will be registered on, on the property title in perpetuity. Um, in addition to the protected areas, um, the habitat area will be enhanced, uh, during construction and development of the property. Uh, that will be a substantial ecologic, ecological contribution to the Latimer Creek watershed, and of course, a beneficial amenity to the Carvath neighborhood. Uh, when the landscape design is also considered, uh, over half of the property will be landscaped and green. Uh, in the thirty years that I've, I've been in the business, uh, this is the most we've ever provided on, and on a project of this size or this, uh, this scale. And, last consideration is the modest size of the project will have a minimal impact on the township's amenities and services, and we'd be, I think this, we would see this as sort of a beneficial contribution. Um, to sort of wrap up, because of the modest size of the project, we simply can't absorb the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in amenity charges. I'm here to ask for your support, um, to make this project feasible and for delivering employment, uh, achieving the employment objectives outlined in the official community plan and the Carvath neighborhood plan. Um, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, uh, to understand any, uh, questions from council, I've got one, one question. Uh, were there any discussions or consideration of, uh, partial waiver, are you looking for a complete waiver?
Um, are, at the time we made the original, uh, Your Worship, the, when we made the original rezoning application and DP application, uh, towards the end of last year, we requested a, uh, a reduction of the amenity charge, um, for the reasons I outlined today, uh, with the, with the impact that the pandemic is having, uh, we are seeking a full waiver so that we can push our project forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor, I just had one, a couple of questions, one, uh, you referenced the, the issue being that the scope of the amenity charges can't be satisfied given the size of the project, so is the issue the amenity charge itself or the, the relatively low single-story density permitted on the site?
Uh, through Your Worship, uh, councillor, the, the, it's, it's a combination of both, actually. Um, the nature of a, a small light industrial project is such that, uh, there's a, there's a fine balance between the amount of, uh, building we can construct, parking and loading that have to be balanced out. Uh, and then the charge itself is, uh, is, is considerable, um, to, you know, perfectly frank, uh, I've never encountered a charge of this magnitude for an industrial, uh, industrial project. Uh, I have encountered similar on residential, however, and that's, that's part of why the economic burden is so, is quite severe. We don't have the opportunity to go up, we don't have the opportunity to create additional density in order to, to, uh, pay the amenity charge.
Now, maybe it's a better question for staff, but, uh, I think I just wanted to confirm, uh, with yourself directly that, that if we are, if we waive this amenity fee for this particular acreage, because I think it's a per-acre amenity charge, uh, the fact that you have low net usable may be causing some, some challenges as well, uh, that if we were to waive this, uh, these charges for these particular acres, that that would, that would just shift amenity program burdens to other property owners, would that be fair?
That might be a question for staff.
Maybe a question for staff, Mr. Mayor?
Let's get to the.
One last question, the challenge of this, of course, being the net usable, as I see it, as you've outlined, have you considered maybe consolidating it with other developers or properties, uh, adjacent to make the economies of scale a little more, a little more easy to manage?
Um, through, through Your Worship, we did consider that. Um, the property immediately to the east is currently under construction, there's no opportunity there. The property was subdivided last year, um, so the southern portion of the lands, uh, is, has been retained with its SR two zoning. Uh, but the, the, the biggest obstacle we have, um, obstacle with respect to this charge, but also one of the benefits to the property, uh, is that we have Latimer Creek running through the prop, running through here. So to go west is, uh, nigh on impossible, because that's where the bulk of Latimer Creek is. The opportunity for consolidation simply isn't there. We did, we did examine it, though.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, if you have any other questions, thank you for your, uh, presentation.
Thank you, Your Worship, thank you, councillors.
Now we have Ms. Teresa O'Callaghan. Minor Hockey Association.
There you go.
You're welcome here, uh, you'll have five minutes to present, and, uh, you just provide us with your name.
Thank you, uh, Your Worship and council, I'm Teresa O'Callaghan, and I serve the Aldergrove Minor Hockey Association Board as a secretary for the executive. So, this morning, if I may, I'm coming before, this morning, this afternoon, I'm coming before you to lend our voice in support of the Aldergrove Credit Union Community Center's efforts to reopen and serve our community and the township of Langley. I would like to start by sharing a little about us, Aldergrove Minor Hockey. We've been supporting the community of Aldergrove's youth for the past forty-eight years, one of many associations in service of youth in sports in our community. However, as a hockey association, we like to think we're the most important, and certainly provide the longest annual program of activities. The importance and value of what we do cannot be overstated. We provide a program designed to deliver structured activity, personal and character development, in addition to education. We take children as young as four and work with them to develop skills as skaters or goalies, of course, but also imparting life skills in terms of teamwork, coping with competition, a sense of fair play, and not to be underestimated, resilience. We also teach youth to be on-ice officials and leaders. The camaraderie forged in the changing rooms and on the ice sets these kids up with lifelong relationships. Peer support while navigating school is invaluable. Our membership functions as one big family. When any of our kids are struggling with home-life issues, another family always steps up and lends support with a financial, moral, or simply a roof over their head and food in their stomach. If it takes a village to raise a child, then the Minor Hockey Association is most certainly that village. I tell you this to underscore the value of the association in our programs. In today's pandemic climate and opioid crisis, because we have the two health crises ongoing right now, what we do has never been more important. The stress imposed by social isolation has a double impact on mental health. The socioeconomic demographic of Aldergrove is such that our youth are at very high risk of negative mental health outcomes, suicide and overdose being of paramount concern. We are proud to say that we are part of the toolkit helping our youth to avoid these pitfalls. So I'm here today to lobby support for the reopening of the community center, the Aldergrove Credit Union Community Center. We need our local arena to install the ice and open judiciously for September. All our, all around our community, arenas have plans for ice to be in place as early as next month. We have worked hard in partnership with the arena leadership to prepare for opening. We have robust safety plans drafted, guided by Hockey Canada, BC Hockey, Beer Sports, and our Provincial Medical Health Officer. Our executive is committed to ensuring our membership is fully compliant with all restrictions. We want our membership and our community, including the staff of the arena, to be safe. We understand the imperative to be fiscally responsible during these challenging times, and I would suggest the cost of not opening is potentially greater than the cost of opening in terms of human impact. I mentioned that other communities' arenas are opening, which means that other hockey associations will be starting a modified hockey season in September. Should we not go ahead in September, our membership will be so disadvantaged that even if ice is installed in December, we will not be able to participate in our league. The threat to our association, should this happen, is very real, and the impact to our families severe. I realize I sound dramatic, but this is dramatic for our families, almost three-hundred of whom have registered their children for a twenty-twenty-one season with us. My ask therefore, my plea on behalf of our association, the community of Aldergrove, is that the arena be empowered to install ice and continue to partner with us in operating pandemic-compliant activities, specifically ice-related, for September. Thank you for allowing us this time today and for hearing our request for support.
Thank you very much, uh, for presenting, because we are gonna be dealing with this issue later on in the agenda, so, uh, thank you for coming and explaining the situation that you have, thank you. There's no questions.
Thank you.
Right, um, the next delegation is Ms. Carly Leakey, Langley Girls Ice Hockey Association.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Welcome here.
Good afternoon, Your Worship and council, and thank you for allowing, yes.
Yes, and, uh, just before you start, if you just provide your name and you have five minutes to present.
Sure, my name is Carly Leakey, and I am the president of Langley Girls Hockey Association for the last two years. Um, so thank you for allowing us these few minutes, just to give you a summary of how COVID has impacted us and how we potentially see it could further impact us. Um, first, we are very aware of all the time and energy and effort township staff and councils put in to navigating this very difficult situation that I don't think any of us planned or wanted to be in. So thank you for that, we do appreciate it, and we understand we all kind, we wanna see the best for our community, so. Um, I'll break my presentation into three parts, and, um, first being safety. Um, I just wanted to bring to council's attention that all lower mainland minor hockey associations have been on weekly meetings with BC Hockey, Hockey Canada for the last four months. So every week, we engage with all female, all male hockey associations across the lower mainland, so that gives us a unique look at what every municipality, what every association is doing, what challenges they have, and it gives us an opportunity to hear how people are working through those challenges. So I do believe it gives us a unique standpoint, maybe from other sports, um, because we have had the time to process this and put plans into place, um, because our season doesn't start until September. So, um, we do appreciate that the indoor space does bring out different concerns than maybe an outdoor space would. Um, however, we do strongly believe that it gives us the ability to control our user groups, um, a lot better than some of the community user groups out there with, um, fields and lacrosse boxes and other places that sport are in right now. So, um, we can control who uses the group or the ice, we can control who's in, we can control how many people are allowed, um, how the safety protocols happen, whether masks are mandatory, all of those items, I think, are really valuable, um, and offset any further risk that an indoor space would, would bring as opposed to the outdoor space. Um, uh, so that's, we are willing to work with anything that the township puts in place for safety protocols, and, um, we'll work through that. Um, as for registration, we have actually seen a large change in our registration this year, but in the positives, so we've actually hit a hundred percent retention, uh, within thirty days of our registration being opened. Um, and we have a growing waitlist, and I say that because in female hockey, this is something that we always are challenged with, is retention in female sport. Um, we don't exactly know why, um, but it is something that we are challenged with every single year, and growing female hockey in particular has been a challenge and a battle, and female hockey is new in the world of hockey particularly. So, we've done a really great job growing female sport, growing female hockey in Langley, and we wanna see that grow. Um, so obviously with a reduced ice amount, that would potentially deter that growth that we've worked so hard to gain thus far, so. Um, in the big scheme of things, Langley Girls Ice Hockey is a small user group when it comes to Township of Langley Ice, um, much like Theresa, Theresa had pointed out, the same benefits lie with us and our hockey association as the boys, um, but they obviously have a different perspective because they are a main user of Township of Langley Ice. I'll give you a little bit of a, an insight to how it affects us, and that's, and we're only a small user. So, if we were to lose GPRC ice for September, October, November, December, whatever foreseeable future, even the loss of two ice sheets a week to our user group would impact these girls to only see the ice once, maybe on average, once and a half times a week. Um, and that's in comparison to last year where they would be on the ice four or five times a week, um, because we're not going to away games, we're not having that access to that ice. So, one sheet of ice a week, some of these high-level athletes, and, and just the athletes that are out there for their mental health and their recreation, um, it makes it very challenging for us to offer a, a comprehensive program with only allowing these girls to have one sheet of ice a week. So, um, with GPRC opening, that gives us at least two sheets of ice per week per user group. Um, with the smaller amount of girls allowed on the ice at a time, obviously that means we have to have more teams, and, um, it all factors in, into it, so. Um, even though I said we're, we are a small user group in the, in comparison to Aldergrove Minor and Langley Minor, um, it still has a substantial impact on, on the girls in Langley as well. So, um, I did touch on the, um, retention, so I just wanna say again, um, we really hope to offer a compress, a comprehensive program for the girls this year, and, um, our, our real fear is that if the boys don't get to have a full comprehensive program this year, chances are the boys are gonna come back full-force next year. Um, with girls, because of the retention issue, we, we do feel that we are gonna lose a good, large percentage of young girls coming into the game, and the older girls that are moving on into their older high school years, and they're just not, um, without a comprehensive program, they're just not interested in coming out for one day a week, so. Uh, we really do hope that we get your support to opening these ranks so that we can do our best to work with township and Keith and everyone to offer a safe programming that we can, um, work with these girls on. So thank you, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, and as I already mentioned, uh, that we have this coming up on our agenda.
Of course, thank you, enjoy your summer break.
Yes, thank you. Alright, so that moves us on to presentations, we have one, uh, presentation on Childcare Action Plan, Mr. Backman?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship, I think Mr. Ward's here, but, uh, Mr. Safi, do you have any introductory comments?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Backman, Your Worship, uh, Mr. Ward is here to provide counsel with a very brief presentation, uh, in support of the, the report that is on council's agenda, report, uh, item number F one, Your Worship. And, uh, with that said, I'll just ask Mr. Ward to, to proceed, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, I've just shared my screen there. Wonderful, are you able to see that, Your Worship? Great, thank you. Right, so as Mr. Safi just said, the purpose of this presentation is to provide an overview of the Childcare Action Plan, including background and, uh, next steps. So in terms of background, on September seventeenth, twenty eighteen, council directed staff to apply for grant funding to undertake a childcare needs assessment, and then following receipt of a report with additional information on grant funding opportunities, December tenth of twenty eighteen, council authorized staff to apply for UBCM grant funding to prepare a childcare needs assessment and an action plan. Having received the grant funding in April twenty nineteen, staff with support from an external consultant undertook the project. It focused and included policy and best-practice research, data collection and analysis, and community engagement with parents, guardians, childcare providers, and various other stakeholders in the community. The Childcare Action Plan is, uh, intended to improve access to affordable and quality childcare in the township. It recognizes childcare as an important part of a complete and sustainable community, and influences, among other things, local economic development, labor force participation, particularly among women, and early childhood development. The plan, which contains all of the required information needed by UBCM, includes, uh, an overview of the roles and responsibilities, an inventory of strengths, gaps, and trends related to childcare, coverage rates, and space creation targets, as well as priorities and actions for the next five years. As identified in the Childcare Action Plan, uh, it articulates the township's primary role as following in these areas with planning and regulating land uses, ensuring health and safety standards for childcare buildings through our permitting and business licensing processes, compiling and sharing information that identifies local needs, convening stakeholders to enhance coordination and collaboration, and engaging other levels of government to influence policies and decisions. The other parties involved include the federal government, the provincial government, Fraser Health Authority, the Langley Childcare Resource and Referral Center, the Langley School District, and of course, childcare providers, both for-profit and nonprofit providers. This slide just identifies the various strengths, gaps, and trends that were identified through the planning process. I won't go through these in detail here, but they are summarized in the council report, which is included in F one of the agenda, and they are detailed in full in Appendix A of the needs, uh, of the Childcare Action Plan, which is the needs assessment. And they are detailed in full in Appendix A of the needs of the Childcare Action Plan, which is the needs assessment. Turning now to childcare coverage rates, which are determined by dividing the number of children, sorry, the number of licensed spaces by the, for every 100 children under the age of 12. As shown in the last tape, sorry, row of this table, there are 19,984 licensed children in the township and there are 3,954 licensed childcare spaces in the township. This results in a coverage rate of 19.8 spaces per 100 children. This is notably lower than the national average of 27.2 spaces per 100 children. And as you can see, the coverage rates are lowest for school-aged children, six to 12 years, followed by infant toddlers under three years. As noted, the UBCM program requires that we identify space creation targets over the next 10 years. And the first step in identifying the number of spaces required is to identify what a target coverage rate would be. We've based our target coverage rates on other research that's been done within Canada and worldwide, and this basically is intended to support a universal childcare system, which the province has said is their vision for childcare in the province. So as you can see here, the target coverage rate is 70 spaces per 100 children for children aged zero to five and 55 spaces per 100 children for school-aged children six to 12 years. These target coverage rates result in a need for over 10,000 new spaces over the next 10 years. As you can see in the final row of this table here. And this is based on the projected number of children between the ages of zero and 12 that we anticipate in the township in 2030. The action plan certainly acknowledges that these space creation targets are very ambitious and will require significant investment from senior levels of government. The action plan also states that the township is not responsible for ensuring these targets are met. To support space creation and address related challenges that were identified, the proposed plan identifies five proposed priority areas with related actions. The first priority is to increase the number of licensed childcare spaces and the eight actions under this priority focus on reviewing land use regulations and policies, identifying spaces that could be transformed into childcare, and undertaking additional research into the potential of the township further supporting childcare. The second priority focuses on affordability with a focus on advocacy and information sharing on existing fee subsidy programs that exist through the province. The third priority, priority is around strengthening our partnerships and collaboration with other stakeholders in the community. And the fifth, sorry, the fourth priority is around addressing the various staffing challenges that exist in this community. And the actions within this priority focus on convening stakeholders and advocating for more support from the province. And finally, the fifth priority is related to enhancing existing before and after school recreation programs. And this is around looking for opportunities to scale up some of the township's existing recreation program offerings, recognizing that these programs are not licensed childcare, but they do serve as filling a, a, a large gap in the lack of after-school and before-school childcare that exists in the community. In terms of next steps, and this is of course subject to council's direction, we would share the needs assessment and the action plan with the province. And this very well could inform future investments from senior levels of government in childcare in the community. And then should council endorse the action plan, staff would proceed with the implementation component. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. Now, council, are there any questions regarding the report? This will show up on F1, some action. At this point, questions of staff? Counselor Richter is first.
Yes, thank you very much. I note in the report that, that we have to submit this by August 1st under the conditions of the grant. So my question is, must council endorse it under the conditions of the grant? Or can council just receive it and you can still submit it by August 1st? That's my first question.
Council could just receive the report and the action plan and that would satisfy the grant application. There's no need for council to endorse the Childcare Action Plan to satisfy the grant.
Okay, thank you. My second question. The, you mentioned that it's ambitious targets. So we've got roughly what, 19 spaces per 100 children? The target is 70 spaces per 100 children. Who set this target? Where did it come from?
So that was what was identified through the planning process. It was the target that through discussions with our consultants that have experience and expertise in this work and staff arrived at. And it's based on various other childcare studies that have done, been done throughout the province as well as information that's received by Statistics Canada that shows what a childcare system looks like when it's functioning well in terms of space creation. And one of the analogies that I like to use is when we look at the uptake in kindergarten in the province of BC, which is voluntary, it's not a required part of the provincial curriculum, we see 94 to 95% of students enrolling in that program, which illustrates and shows that when, when these programs are of quality, parents and guardians will use them.
Okay. And but so going back to the 70s, so this, this is not a, a number that's set by government federally or provincially. This is just a number that's been put together by the consultant used on the report?
It's been put together by the consultant and staff. So we certainly coordinated and liaised and had a very robust discussion around what that target would be. I can sort of, you know, say again that other jurisdictions around the world that see truly universal childcare are looking at spaces in the range of 80 to 90 spaces per 100 children.
Okay, but I, I'm looking at Canada. You've got the Canadian average of 27 spaces, like to go from 27 to 70 is quite a jump. And the other communities that are putting these plans together, have they adopted a 70 spaces as well or there's a little lower?
Some of them are more consistent with what the national rate is of 27.2, for example. The city of Langley, which we sort of collaborated with on the first phase of this project with the community engagement, they've adopted targets consistent with what's being proposed in the township's action plan.
Okay. And my third question, the appendices, particularly page 67, reference survey results, they talk in percentages. How many people were actually surveyed and was it a statistically significant sample? If it was, what's the margin of error?
It wasn't a statistically, the, the survey instrument wasn't intended to be statistically valid per se. We, we didn't hire a third-party firm to undertake a telephone survey with a certain margin of error. It was a survey that was just open broadly to childcare providers and child, and sorry, rather, parents and guardians in the community. The survey for parents and guardians received 975 respondents, 794 of which were located in the Township of Langley.
Okay. And I note throughout the report, particularly between pages 32 to 42, which are the action plans, basically get into a significant policy change for council in terms of what it is that we'll be providing. So I don't think this is the venue or the time to go through all of those in detail. But I, I do think we should probably be sending this for detailed review to the council prior or policy committee because it is a significant deviation of what our current policies and practices are. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Whitmarsh.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Ward, for coming and making the presentation today. I have a few questions for you. I'm wondering, how is this strategy or plan connected or related to what we've heard over the last number of years from, from our provincial and federal governments talking about like $10 daycare and these sort of things and a, and a need to expand? Is, is this somehow linked to that? Is that how we get to the 70? Because in order to provide that, we'd have to have that many spots?
We believe that it is, that as it sort of states it, and shouldn't say sort of, as it does state in the Childcare Action Plan, that if the province intends to realize its vision for universally accessible childcare, these are the number of spaces that we believe will be required for that system. So this is about articulating to the province what will be required for them to realize their vision.
Right. So you did indicate that there is no sort of responsibility on municipalities to provide these spaces and yet it seems that if municipalities don't provide these spaces, then provincial targets or federal targets, it would be impossible for them to reach it without municipalities.
I, I don't think that's necessarily the, the case with absolute respect. I, I think the actions that have been identified in the Childcare Action Plan speak primarily to our role around convening, advocating, and land use policy and regulations. There are certainly some actions that speak to exploring the future feasibility of providing more direct support for childcare. But those are exploratory actions at this point in time and they're certainly not committing the township to any further investment in direct support in childcare.
Right, okay. Another question I had for you, when I looked at your, the childcare coverage rates table that you just showed us, I, it was interesting to me that the age group of three to five, we have almost 50, 50 spaces per 100 children and yet in the under three and the over six, you know, we're significantly lower. Is there, is there something that we, there might be happening systematically in the township with regards to what we might be doing in, in allowing daycare spaces in our community that somehow caters better to that three to five age group? Or is there something that we're doing that's making it difficult for the other two groups to provide spaces currently in, in our, in the township?
We didn't hear that through our engagement. We didn't specifically hear that, rather, through our engagement with childcare operators and stakeholders. What we understand is that with the younger age group, so zero to two, they require a much higher staffing ratio. So that level of care is often more costly to provide. And then the other piece with the out-of-school care is that just given the hours that are required, it's very difficult for providers to provide that care as well and to staff it for, you know, an individual staff person to work in the morning and then an afternoon shift. The other piece with the three to five is that it includes preschool spaces, which may be part-time. So not offering, you know, care five days a week through business hours. So that's probably also why that number is a little bit higher.
Right, okay. And last question for me is related to how much of it, you know, the affordability question and how much of, of, you know, these 10,000 numbers would be, you know, numbers that would be supplemented through either government funding or other kinds of funding versus people paying sort of the full price of, of daycare space. 10,000 spaces is a lot, but is it all going to be you know, affordable kinds of spaces or is it going to, is it just any kind of space is what the 10,000 is?
So the province with its vision for a universal accessible system, which is not incredibly clearly defined at this point in time, but we understand that those spaces would be available at $10 a day.
So the 10,000 you're talking about are potentially all at $10 a day?
That wouldn't specifically be up to us on how that happens, but if we were to realize these space creation targets at the same time as the province was able to realize its vision for $10 a day daycare, then presumably those spaces would be $10 per day. But there's certainly nothing to guarantee that at this point in time.
Right, okay. Thank you very much.
Hi there. Thanks for your report. I guess my question is of these 10,000 kids who are, you're counting spaces, how many of them actually require daycare? Because a lot of parents will not want to maybe have anyone else care for their children. So how many would be required? I know that I have, you know, I'm a grandma of a, of a little one that absolutely needs to go to daycare, but I also have another grandchild whose parents have chosen to, you know, forego the, the next five years and to care for their child themselves. So everyone is, is obviously in a different situation. So I'm, you know, I'm, I'm just wondering, that number just seems really high and I would, I can totally get the, the $10 a day daycare for, for families who are, you know, struggling and need to, need that to make ends meet. So I'm just, just trying to, I'm just trying to figure out those numbers.
Great. And, and it was a very, probably of the entire project, the most challenging consideration for us to work through on what that target space creation should be because the province, the federal government have not explicitly told us what that should be. So again, the 70 for children aged zero to five and 55 spaces for every 100 children aged six to 12 is based on best practice research, what we see from other studies, what we've seen from Statistics Canada. Not all of those spaces necessarily would be full-time spaces. They wouldn't necessarily have to be full-time spaces. What we see in other jurisdictions that have universally accessible, so affordable, quality childcare programs is that they are very well used by parents and guardians. Maybe not all the time, but on a part-time basis, that certainly.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Worship, and thank you, Mr. Ward, for this presentation and the report, which is very interesting. Further to the comments, I guess my perspective is this is somewhat similar to our housing action plan in a sense that it's meant to create a roadmap, but it doesn't define prescriptively exactly what it is that we need to do. So I'm wondering, as the coordinator and working with stakeholders and your understanding of the process, if you, you referred to land use planning. So my assumption is, and you could correct me if I'm wrong, that it would be the case that it would be more easy and more, and preferable for daycare spots to be provided if the local government was enhancing opportunities for that to happen. So that really comes down to land use planning on our part. Is that correct?
That is certainly one element that's considered in the action plan is that, you know, we've, we've heard that actually our zoning bylaw is, is already fairly permissive, but we would certainly as an action, as identified in the plan, look to review the zoning bylaw for any unintended barriers to the creation of new childcare spaces. And that could range from land uses to, you know, things equally around parking requirements, for example.
Thank you. And just one supplemental thought is that it seems like there is suddenly, after many, many years of dialogue and discussion, this sudden influx of information and enthusiasm for supporting financially for daycare. I have to assume that if both the province and now apparently the federal government is interested in doing that, that there must be a lot of economic analysis behind this about why this would be important for our communities.
As identified or articulated in our Childcare Action Plan, we don't see this as, you know, an action plan, certainly just for the, the social realm, the social wellbeing of our community, but we certainly heard through engagement with local business organizations as part of this project, how important childcare is, you know, for their employees, for entrepreneurs that need affordable, accessible care to run their businesses.
Thank you.
Counsel Ferguson. Counsel Ferguson, you're, you're not coming through. I don't know if you're, looks like you need us off, but you're not coming through. Give your headset again. No, don't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I think I wasn't sure for looking through Zoom here, whether there was Kurt Cobain there or, or Mr. Ward. But I did want to say that as a teacher, these are certainly, the need is out there for the type of activities and this type of a program that can be expanded on or, or added to or subtracted as years go by because certainly the plan for the future is, is more and more people are doing different things, either recreation or, or working other things out with the community. So our report is, is on the agenda. So I look forward to more debate as the time comes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. A very interesting report, certainly something that affects us all or certainly we're, we're old. we're we're older, we have children and grandchildren affects them. So but uh thank you very much for that. So we'll now uh I've got two hands up. Is this questions for the report or?
No, I I wanted to move receipt and referral to CPC.
Okay, so uh let me get to that and I'll get to you. Okay, so thank you very much, Mr. Ward, for your presentation. So I'll move on to reports to council and uh we start with F one, the childcare action plan and Counselor Richter.
Uh ye- yes, I would like to move receipt of the report and referral to uh the council process committee for a detailed policy discussion.
Is there a second? Counselor, we're seconds. Uh so
Okay.
Counselor, your discussion.
Yes, um it seems to me that uh of the five priorities that are set, I'm not sure that township has a role in three, four and five. Or if we do have a role, then what this uh report is proposing is significantly different than the role that we've played to date. The other thing that I'm concerned about uh when we go through the the detailed um uh action points, and these are in the report pages thirty-two to forty-two, uh things like assessing municipal facilities that could be retrofitted, um transforming spaces that are underutilized, um uh exploring the feasibility of the township delivering licensed childcare. Uh these are have huge uh financial implications for us. And that's why I think we need to have a very robust discussion at CPC uh before we start moving forward on uh on these. It seems to me that um a lot of what's in these action points could be seen to be uh a provincial download that we are taking on responsibility uh for a uh provincial uh situation. Uh for example, at one point in the report, um they're talking about Ontario's before and after school programs in it, and in Ontario, the the school boards are required to offer before and after here uh school care. And it seems to me that that's a more appropriate venue for offering before and after school care uh than the municipality is. So I think um I think we need to go through these points uh on a point-by-point basis. I think we need to look at the policy and cost implications of each of them. I uh I note in the report that there is reference to it would only cost ten thousand. Uh just converting one facility is gonna cost more than ten thousand dollars. So that's why I think we need to um uh we need to have a very detailed discussion on it. And those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh Council on.
Thank you. Yeah, I had my hand up before the motion was made, but uh so I hope we can slow down a little bit here. I don't know. You didn't see that, your worship, but that is. So the question I have is because the recommendation was to endorse, so can I hear back the motion that is being proposed now because I didn't, I think I heard uh Mr. Ward say that we could receive the report and that would be enough for him to move to the next steps of submitting.
So just just I want to see the discussion, but the motion right now is to receive and refer, so I would before we ask the question, I'm gonna ask for a division so that we can vote separately on receipt and then separately on referral.
Yes, yeah, yeah, because there is an awful lot in here, I agree, and I was actually confused as the
I have second division.
Okay, well, just
We're not there yet, Fergie, slow down.
Slow down.
Uh yeah, so if um if we're gonna discuss it further at a policy, that that makes sense, but as long as we can carry on with the program that we've authorized so far to keep uh keep the ball rolling. But um yeah, so I'm happy with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Council Ferguson.
Did you want a motion for division, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, yeah, just move move division.
I'll make that motion now.
Okay, is there a second division? Yeah, on division, all those in favor? Opposed, carries. Uh so I see no further questions. So I'm gonna uh uh call the question on the receipt only. So all those in favor on receipt? And the opposed, the opposed, that carries unanimously. It's now on the referral to CPC. Uh certainly, uh this could merit some discussion. I I I really wanna uh thank staff for this in-depth report. I don't see it myself as a as a download. I think certainly there are areas that if future councils decide to go that way, and I don't know what the landscape will look like future from now, but really, uh I do believe that we as a council or as municipality need to be uh facilitators and assistant getting these spaces open. So I I prefer to um to endorse this, and I know it's gonna open up more discussions down the road, but I'll leave that to council. So um Council Richter on the referral. You might be muted, Counselor.
Yeah, I'm getting everything turned on again here. Thank you very much.
It's a, I know, it's a struggle.
And and I concur with uh your comments, Mr. Mayor, from the point of view of I think it's our job to ensure that these spaces are being built. But I don't think it's our job to be operating these spaces. And there is a significant component in this report which pushes us into an operational role around childcare. And that's not our job, and I don't think we should be doing it un- unless we're fully aware of the cost ramifications, the full cost ramifications of doing that because uh it's going to require additional staffing, uh it's going to require additional facilities. Um it's and and you know, really, from the point of view, uh it it's the provincial government's responsibility to be overseeing this. They're the ones that have made the commitment to ten dollar a day daycare. But it almost looks like they're putting us in the position where um they might get operators for ten dollars a day daycare, but they're gonna be using uh our our land and our facilities in order to be able to do that. And I just, I'm not comfortable going that far yet. So that's why I think we should be taking it to CPC and going through these and deciding on each one. Uh yes, that's our job. We should be doing it. Or no, that's not our job. We shouldn't be doing it.
Thank you for that. Okay, uh so I'm now gonna call a question on the referral to CPC. Uh all those in favor?
Favor.
Opposed, opposed, Counsel Whitmarsh.
Ferguson opposed.
Anybody else opposed? Counsel Klimst, anybody else opposed? Motion carries, I believe that was. Counsel Long, are you opposed? Just say hand. I can't hear you.
Is it close?
No, that's not a question. I have to do a count here.
Uh I I won't oppose it, but may as well talk about it.
Okay, sounds good. So so there's no more discussion. It's just your vote. So you're in favor, uh the motion carries.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to get a roll call before I can change my vote on every vote as well.
I'm not, I didn't take a roll call. I just, uh this is Zoom. I'm trying to interpret hands going up and down.
Please just vote after you get the results.
Counselor Woodward. I'd ask that you, at Counsel, this this discussion doesn't need to go any further. I didn't take a roll. I do have to record who's opposed. That is my job as chair. Perhaps one day you get an opportunity to sit here, you'll try and interpret a Zoom vote. And I'll leave that to a future meeting for you to figure out.
Relax.
Well, the vote carries five to four, so we're gonna move on to um F two. And this is the revised council calendar for September to December twenty twenty. Uh so if I can have a motion, please. Counsel Davis moves it. It's our secondary. It's Andy's second. It's controversial. Counsel Woodward, uh discussion. Okay, Counsel Woodward.
Um I just wanted to ref- uh bring counsel's attention. We have a council meeting proposed for December twenty first. Um I'd like to propose that we we change that to December fourteenth or cancel it altogether. Um I I don't want to have a council meeting that close to to Christmas.
And now is that a motion?
Uh yes, at this point, I'll wait for the speakers, but I wanted to another way that if we're gonna do an amendment, maybe do them all together, or I'd I would like to make that amendment at some point.
Okay, so I'll go through the list and we'll we'll hold that one. Uh Counsel Davis on the calendar.
You know, I had the same thing written down and not not that I don't want to have a meeting like Counselor Woodward said, but I I'm wondering if staff it because there's maybe more in the background that goes on than just me. So I like I I but I totally agree, like like it is really close to that week of and people do travel. But I I I was just wondering, it may be maybe hard on staff. Maybe Mr. Backham hasn't uh or maybe there's a reason it's being there, but uh I would support on the fourteenth. As long as we maybe we could just get the um uh uh comment from Mr. Backham.
Uh uh it might be something to do with all the hearings. Um Mr. Backham, if you can make a comment on the staff side of it.
Uh thank you, your worship, I'll defer to Ms. Bauer if I've got this incorrect, but I believe the twenty first allowed us for a two-week window from the previous meeting. That allows a sufficient time to advertise an event of public hearing. We um, of course, we have no idea whether there'd be a public hearing, but that's the reason for the gap. Uh various councils have done it various ways, such as uh moving the meeting up or not having the meeting and simply recognizing a public hearing called from matters proceeding on the seventh or the first week of December would be held the following January.
Okay, so you could you could move the meeting to the seventh.
It it's good to leave it in the calendar if we need a public hearing, things like staff are are telling us. Uh if we wish to add one for the fourteenth, deal with business, uh but we need to reserve the public hearing uh date due to legislative requirements. I think that's probably the reasons there.
Thank you.
Uh Counselor Long? Uh Counsel, sorry, Counsel Richter.
So I
All right, the Counsel, uh
Counselor Long can go first. I'll wait.
Yeah, I hope it's okay if I, is it okay with Counsel Woodward I speak?
Counsel Long, go ahead.
Well, um I'm wondering if if we wouldn't push it back to maybe uh November the thirtieth for a meeting or would that work at all? Or you could do November thirtieth at a meeting instead of the twenty first?
But I think you can add the meetings if you you need to. Having this in the calendar assists staff if required, but.
Whatever council decides, I'm fine.
Counsel Richter.
Uh yes, I support moving that uh December meeting as well. Uh I just wanted a question, I I just had a question of clarification here with regards to now the uh a schedule of meetings. This is just basically to set the meeting dates. Um is it saying that those meetings will be in person or will they be electronic or will they be a hybrid?
Uh according to our procedure by law, at this point in time, um they will be through Zoom. Uh with staff are looking at ways to uh do a hybrid version and follow as long as this uh provincial state of emergency COVID is in place. So uh it's hard for us to uh determine at this time what kind of uh technology changes they can make here. The uh dates, I believe, are are they consistent with the calendar that's approved by uh council at the beginning of the of the year last December?
Yes, the majority of the um meetings are consistent. There was the one added in September as UBCM had been canceled, so we were able to put a meeting in there. Or it's been made virtual, pardon me. So that allowed us to get an extra meeting in September. Um and then there was the change to the December date, and that was strictly to try and allow a public hearing if it was necessary.
Okay, so um hopefully it helps uh helps council with the decision. So the twenty first is is there as a bookmark or a holder place for a public hearing.
Okay, but I I was more concerned about the format of the meeting rather than the meeting dates. Uh because when we passed our original motion, wasn't it that we were going to continue to meet electronically up to December? And after or and then perhaps revisit it in September as to whether we wanted to go in person? I'm just trying to recall the motion.
I believe the 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 bylaw that or the amendment to the procedure by law allows for electronic meetings until December thirty first of this year. That would, of course, be dependent on the um provincial emergency level. Um so long as there's a provincial emergency level, the province allows us to have electronic meetings. At this time, we haven't determined the form of the meeting that we'll take in September. Um we are trying to modify in order to have a hybrid, so some counselors could appear in the in the Fraser River Presentation Theater, should they wish, and some counselors could continue to be on Zoom. We're not too sure exactly what that's going to look like at the moment. We're dealing with technology issues. But as soon as we have an idea, we will definitely update council.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh Mr. Mayor, we can't hear you.
You're frozen or you're muted.
I was frozen. Uh so Counsel Woodward, if you should make the amendment, one suggestion would be to leave the seven PM public hearing meeting if it's needed from the twenty first. Uh but then again, uh we'll be around for that. However, uh with, it's hard to predict if we'll still be doing two meetings and
Yeah, no, we just we just end up with two meetings, Mr. Mayor. I would move that we just don't have the public hearing till January. I mean, I think in the past we've done back-to-back meetings. I know the staff don't like it, but I'd be happy to cancel it altogether as well. But uh I don't want to be having a meeting on the twenty first.
To make that amendment.
Either way, I was obviously still attending, so.
All right, do you wish to make an amendment?
We should make an amendment to re- to move it to the fourteenth or uh cancel it altogether.
I'll second that.
Mister Mister Backham has a Yeah, pick pick one. You either move it or
Okay, let's just relocate it to the fourteen.
Fourteenth, okay.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Mayor, please.
Yeah, so it's moved by Counsel Woodward, second by Counsel Richter, Counsel Long.
Before the motion was made, I was trying to make a suggestion. Can staff respond to why we couldn't move everything back a week after Thanksgiving? Why do we have a uh a two-week gap there? We could have a meeting on the nineteenth and then every every two weeks after that, that would eliminate the twenty first.
Good question, Ms. Ms. Bauer.
That'll be better. That means we keep the amount of meetings. We don't want to not do business if we have to. If we go back to October.
Ms. Bauer.
I've just actually been advised that there is a workshop scheduled um on the Nov- the November date of the sixteenth, so it would be while anything's possible, it would take a little bit of ju- of juggling.
Okay, uh Counsel Davis.
Uh you know what? I I I just don't want to, I'm try, I was trying to take my hand off, but I just don't want to not vote for it because I don't want to meet that day. Like I'm just thinking of the, but you know what? I'm I would support going to January because I I would I would suggest a public hearing in January might not uh affect everybody quite as much as it would the first in that week of Christmas.
So uh so the motion is to uh cancel the twenty first, have it on the fourteenth. Uh we still have the ability to add on the twenty first if council sees fit, so if we do remove it now, that doesn't uh stop us from adding it if it's required. Uh the public hearing, uh if there's requirement for it, would happen in January anyway, uh the next meeting. So um so with that, uh it's what is called a question on this amendment. All those in favor? Opposed, carries. Now the motion has amended. All those in favor? Opposed, that carries. Thank you. That takes us down to half three. This is recycling depot assessment. And uh there's a motion to request Metro Vancouver to move towards establishing recycling depots. And uh if I can have a motion on that, please. Counsel Davis, a second, and Counsel Whitmarsh. Yeah, okay, uh Davis and Whitmarsh. And Counsel Davis, and maybe I'll just start a little bit as Chair of Zero Waste.
My I I didn't come off. It that was the last one.
Okay, so, okay, fine. So maybe just real quick as Chair of Zero Waste, uh certainly it's been discussed at committee level, uh Metro Vancouver is looking at uh at quitting recycling depots at all of the transfer stations. Uh we are also in the process of uh reviewing and renewing the integrated solid waste management plan, which is a requirement every ten years, and that process is just getting underway. Uh so I think this is timely, that Tontre Pliny does send us to Metro Vancouver, certainly uh reinforce that. Uh having uh recycling depots and and the transfer stations. The other thing is the uh transfer station, moving a transfer station, it's certainly something that we can look at. Uh may be difficult when we want to move a transfer station to somebody else's backyard. Uh quite often, these are located on old landfills and uh like equipment is being built on the old land, the new equipment station is being built on the old landfill. So that'll that provides some challenges down the road. Uh I think at this point to send it, the request uh to have them look at it is a bit of introduction. Uh Counsel Richter.
Uh yeah, uh actually, I'm glad that you addressed that, Mr. Mayor, because I was gonna ask you, didn't Metro approve a Surrey transfer station already? I thought we voted on that, not that one, though. So do we need to have Surrey in this motion at all?
It's it's just a request. I believe Surrey recycling is all already going ahead, but I'm not hundred percent sure. Have to look at that. But this doesn't hurt to put a letter.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
That's reinforced. Counsel Long.
Yeah, thanks. There's two things intrigued me in the report uh was, well, first of all, maybe this is a discussion we don't want to have in in the public, but where on earth would you relocate this to? I mean, that's gonna be an extremely challenging uh operation to re- recite a recycling depot. That's number one. But I'm also intrigued about Maple Ridge, um that it has one that's operated by a community-based, non-for-profit organization. But I'm also intrigued about Maple Ridge, that it has one that's operated by a community-based, non-for-profit organization. And I'm wondering if that model couldn't be duplicated, you know, more, we shouldn't be possibly exploring that. So I'm not sure how it fits into the motion or whatever is happening now, but I just put that out there because that's a fabulous model that they have in Maple Ridge. And it'd be nice if we could follow suit, maybe even invite them to come and talk to us or something in that respect or talk to Metro.
There's some funding. I believe they fund it. Whereas now we have Metro Vancouver funding.
It is funded and then of course the, the funds are used to support the organization, but supports folks with, with all kinds of needs.
Councillor Whitmarsh.
Yes, thank you. I just had a, a quick question. I noticed on page four of the report, it has a list of accepted items and then it has a list of items that are only accepted at some locations. Is, is the intention that we would be looking to be the sort of all encompassing location where we would accept these other items that might be considered hazardous? It seems like right now the only place to go to or closest maybe is Abbotsford, but I'm wondering about paints and flammable liquids and propane tanks and stuff like that. Is that the kind of thing we're talking about here?
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, the intent, your worship, would be in collaboration with Metro Vancouver, excuse me, to try and be as complete as possible, to provide as much of a service for collection of as many items and recyclables as possible. But certainly that's something that we will have to discuss with, with Metro Vancouver in terms of its feasibility and, and potential phasing in approach. And your worship, while I've got, I guess, the opportunity to speak, if I may, in terms of the comments that were made, made earlier with respect to the Maple Ridge operation and the model. As far as staff is concerned, your worship, it is not, it is not a, a cost neutral operation. In fact, it does, it does have a, a cost bearing imposition on the municipal side of things. And as far as the relocation is concerned, as the report suggests, your worship, it is just an exploration at this point. Staff recognize the, the population growth, the projected population growth is along the western corridor of the township. So this is just a request to put them on notice that something that may be A, more geographically, I guess, central, the township. B, appropriately zoned, and, and C, in collaboration with the township, may be possible, and then we can start talking about the options at that point.
Thank you for that.
Councillor Ferguson.
From what I, yeah, Mister Mayor, it's, this is like an ask right now. We're asking Metro Vancouver in conjunction, I guess, with the metro's plan and with your committee. My quest, my first question to you is a, a number of these things is I can ask right now. Is that not correct?
That's correct. We're just requesting.
Okay, so my quest, you know, my question is, I mean, there may be some challenges and some timeline problems regarding Metro Vancouver. What they would do and, and to the point of acquiring the necessary properties and going through the next steps. Have you got any idea what those timelines and benchmarks would look like?
I, we, I haven't seen anything about relocating my line of transportation. We haven't discussed that, I recall. Certainly recycling is something can be done in the existing one, and if it was to be moved, then that would be moved.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so no further discussion. I'll call a question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Move on to climate action strategy update, and this is, I believe, from a prior meeting where council was concerned about costs and public consultation. So this would certainly authorize staff to proceed with public consultation and report a financial plan for council's further consideration. So I'd ask for a motion.
I'll move.
Oh, moved.
Yeah, good. I move councillor Whitmarsh. That's secondary. Who's secondary?
Arnesson.
Councillor Arnesson, thank you. And discussion. Councillor Richter.
Yes, thank you very much, Mister Mayor. I had a question around the numbers. I, I thank staff for putting some numbers together, but I just want to make sure that we understand what's being proposed here. So is it a hundred and thirty dollars additional taxes per household per year? So year one, it would be a hundred and thirty dollars. Year two, it would be a hundred and thirty dollars. Year three, it would be a hundred and thirty dollars? Is that's, is that the intent of this? Or is it going to go like year one is a hundred and thirty, year two is two hundred and eighty, year three is three hundred and ninety?
Thank you, your worship. The average, and, and I have to, I guess, preface my comments, your worship, in that the, the estimate, even though staff has tried to provide as much detail as possible, it still remains a high level estimate. So a lot of the, the numbers, the actual costs will depend on further direction from council. It will depend on the technicalities, I guess, in terms of application of, of the various items and various measures. That said, your worship, it is an average cost over the ten year life. And it is, if you will, your worship, it's a holistic approach as to what the costs are. So that is not going to be the actual cost that will be applied to an average household. What we're presenting to council is, if you will, if you can take, consider it in two, two ways. One is the, the cost, the overall cost of the program. And then if there were no other contributing factors such as external grant opportunities, such as other revenue sources already forming part of our operation, that would be the overall cost. And then what if we factor those other costs in that we are, we are certain of, such as external funding, such as existing internal operating budgets, that would then reduce it to something lower than what the overall costs are? So the ten year average is about a hundred and thirty dollars per household. For twenty twenty one, staff is projecting a cost of overall forty something, forty one, twenty nine dollars. And then once you factor in, as I said, the, the grant opportunities, the incentives, existing operations, existing commitments, then that will come to sixteen dollars and forty seven cents for twenty twenty one.
Okay, so I, I guess what I'm trying to get a handle on is, this is like a new tax levy. If we've got a hundred and thirty dollars going per house each year, that works out to how many millions of additional tax dollars?
Maybe I'm just trying to, I know I had some discussion with Mister Bakken on this. The amount of money is an estimate of what it would, of the total cost, yet I think Mr. Sepey mentioned through existing budgets. So for example, if you want to do zero emissions in existing buildings, and I'm going to use an example of a new water tank has to come in, we'd be purchasing a water tank, which would reduce our, our emissions. And you see that as a rough example, it could be anything. So that would be part of our maintenance budget. So it wouldn't increase the taxes. It's what we're already doing anyway, but we'd be choosing ways to reduce emissions. The hundred and thirty, I think, is a, encapsulates all of those sorts of things. And if there are other grants that come in, they, they would also help reduce that hundred and thirty. So I think the, the staff, this, Mr. Sepey can help me with this. I believe the one thirty is really just to give a, a big picture view. But a lot of these will be funded through our existing budgets, and as we move forward in the next several decades, looking at ways to reduce our greenhouse gas. That's what we include in many of our budgets and, Mister Sepey.
That's correct, your worship. I just, without asking your permission, I just decided to share the screen, your worship. This is the, the chart that is already part of the council report, your worship. It's on page six. And as you just clarified, your worship, the comments I was trying to make earlier i- is that while the overall cost for the purpose of being complete is being presented to council as forty one dollars and twenty nine cents per household for twenty twenty one, the fact of the matter is that once you factor in all the other existing contributions that we have that we can account for, then the actual net cost per household is estimated at sixteen, sixteen dollars and forty seven cents.
Okay, so, but it says here on page five that the average annual estimated impact of approximately hundred and thirty for the next ten years. In the first few years, it is expected that studies, analyses, project planning, et cetera, will be needed. So we're basically putting an additional property tax on that's essentially going into the engineering department, because most of these categories fall under engineering. And it's really just to do studies? So that, that forty one dollars you were just talking about, that's mainly for studies?
No, it is not, your worship, and it does provide for actually implementing some measures. And I've got Mister Trowhan here with me, and he, he has done the number crunching and analysis in collaboration with our finance department and Miss Sinclair. And he advises that the sixteen point four seven, or is that the forty something? The sixteen forty seven equates to approximately, based on today's information that we have available, equates to approximately zero point eight percent taxing case.
And this is just for climate change? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ferguson.
I think, yeah, if I may, I think councillor Richter and others have asked questions as we go into, I, I know provincial guidelines and provincial requirements have come into place. We have to be always cautious whenever we're introducing new issues, new policies, new tax entries into our tax bill. I think they're always important because they could always start off very, 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 very small and they could expand very, very rapidly. And I think that's something we should be cognizant of. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Thanks, Mister Mayor. I got a couple of questions as well. Through to staff, if that's all right. How many representative households are there in the township?
Your worship, it's around forty three thousand.
Okay, so I'm just trying to put it, because it wasn't sort of summarized as a total spending package, but if we take the one thirty times that number, we're, we're hitting fifty five, sixty million dollars. Does that sound about right?
That sounds about right, your worship, yes.
Yeah, over ten years. So, I mean, maybe more as, as, as costs increase. I'm a little nervous to send this to the public saying that we're de facto endorsing, because I think that's the message we send. We're de facto endorsing fifty five million dollars in spending. I mean, increased property taxes or presupposing de facto preapproving that other projects will not be done on the same timeline. So the climate change items listed for twenty twenty one, and I, I take that as twenty twenty one, they're not really competing with the rest of the budget here. They're being brought forward in July, presented as, you know, minor items, but then there's lots of minor items that we don't get funded. They're not competing with the remain, with all the other priorities the township has, like every other item in the budget. So I don't see what the problem would be, and then maybe, maybe the staff have some response to this, what the problem would be to refer this to the budget process and include public consultation for this plan or a version of this plan with the consultation that occurs with the normal budget process and have these twenty twenty one items compete for funding like every other item. Sort of not sending this out to the public and the way it feels that we're de facto all but preapproving this twenty twenty one list. That's how it feels. I mean, not technically what's happening, but how are we going to show them to the public and then pull them out of the budget in twenty twenty one? Not even seeing what the current financial situation is. For what I read, a lot of this funding going into a climate change strategy fund or something, similar to what was attempted last year. So, Mister Mayor, I just, there's another comment, another councillor wants to speak, but I would look at, and maybe we can consider a referral to the budget process rather than sending what is fifty five million dollars in spending to the public based upon what I perceive as a couple of pages of information. Thanks.
I don't know if my calculator is wrong, but I get five point five million dollars. Multiply a hundred, forty three thousand times hundred and thirty.
It's per year, Mister Mayor.
Oh, okay, per year. Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, I thought you were talking fifty five million per year. So good we got that clear. Thanks. Councillor Arnesson.
Yes, thank you, your worship. Well, it's been a lively discussion so far. My anticipated result of today's further details was that it was more or less for the purpose of putting this forward to the public to get their feedback on this. So, but it seems what's happening instead is, and there's nothing wrong with that, is we are anticipating and trying to prevent this information and to try and come up with a substantiated number. And I don't think it's clear at this time that we could actually know, as staff have indicated, how much money is available from other sources when we look at what these different studies will show us. I can only say that everything that I see currently indicates that both the provincial and the federal government have a huge source of funds that they wish to use with respect to our restart programs. And much of that, I believe, is earmarked for green initiatives. So I would say that in order to put this forward in a way that will just be considered in other budgetary discussions would not be the best outcome, because then how would you know what was available? If you ask people, would I rather have, you know, a new recreation facility over the course of ten years, if we're earmarking money for that, or would I prefer to have that money go to climate change? I, I don't necessarily believe that we have detailed information at this point. And I, I, I do have a question for staff, and it would be the case, unless I'm wrong, that council, any council of the day would have discretion at some point to cancel this program if they so chose. Would that be correct?
That is. Thank you, your worship. That is correct, your worship. There is, there's nothing that would prevent a future council from not approving the budget that might be necessary to, to come, to continue with, with a certain certain step or a certain plan initiative.
Okay, well, so just to follow up on that, thank you, Mister Sepey. That's what I thought. So it's clear to me that in making this decision, as was pointed out in the staff report, that there is, is a huge upside for us potentially to try and mitigate the amount of climate damage that we are going to incur in the township of Langley. Most immediately, within the last six months, we've had multi millions of dollars worth of damage to our infrastructure. So I would just like to point out what seems to be fairly obvious to me, and it may not resonate with everybody, but I would rather take an approach that airs on the side of caution to make a relatively modest investment in the hopes that that will get us more to where we want to be along the lines of other metro communities, which I believe are directing themselves towards a similar approach. And if we are positioning ourselves this way, I just want to state that I was in no way suggesting that I think we should rescind any of these, but I just want to make it clear that we are not committing ourselves, should something else catastrophic happen, and we are unable to invest a particular amount of money in a particular budget year. So those are just my contextualized comments.
Thank you. Councillor Whitmarsh.
Yes, thank you. I, I, I fully appreciate the comments made by councillor Woodward with regards to, you know, sending this to the budget process and feeling maybe uncomfortable with the amount of money here in that process and preapproving it. I guess I see it, although slightly different in terms of process. I, I think it does need to go to the budget process, but I think what's being, what, what I see as being suggested here is that there's actually a public consultation process specifically around this climate change action plan, the climate action strategy, and that we would look to get public consultation on, on how we're going, what the cost might be, and, and sort of get some feedback prior to taking it to the budget process. So it's really, to me, a two-step process. First, let's get public consultation, get the feedback from that, and then we will modify and make adjustments to what we then actually send to the budgeting process. So, so I'm supportive of the sending it now. I think the budgeting process is important for sure, but that to me is a second step. There's a first step before it goes to that, and that is consultation specifically on the climate action strategy, which we've approved as a council in general. Now we need to take it to the public with regards to the actual finances. Thank you. Cool.
Counselor Wong.
I agree with the staff presentation or the recommendation. You know, it's climate change is something, you just can't deny it. It's going to cost more as we wait. As time goes on, so it's something that we have to act on fast. When, when the budget comes, everything will be considered when it's budget time, and you know how much fun we have with budget. But I think it's very important, and we did talk about this at great length at the last meeting, a couple of meetings ago. Get some public input, but the numbers are firmer in this report, but there's still staff are saying we don't really know where these. The numbers will come, but we do know one thing. For every dollar we spend now, we'll probably have to spend two or three dollars many years down the road. So it's certainly something we need to get ahead of. Everybody needs to work together, as is mentioned in the report. There's a lot of partnerships involved with the provincial and federal government, so we have to be doing our part. I think we need to move ahead on this, so I'm quite supportive of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor. Mr. Saffy, you have a comment?
Thank you, worship. I just wanted to, I guess, provide a bit more information to council for their peace of mind in that. What staff was anticipating. I guess at some point in the past was council's endorsement of the strategy. Council felt it was necessary for council to have some information appropriately so about the costs of the strategy. And then when the the costs were provided at high level, council required more and more information. So that's really what we're doing. Providing information that council asked for. At the end of the day, it is not a budget that count that staff is asking council to endorse. It is actually the strategy. With with the information that council required in terms of. I guess, how does this impact future budgets before I approve, before council approves? The the strategy, which was being then provided to council, which requires council, which requires public input. So I just wanted to provide that that sort of context back to council as well.
Appreciate that. Counselor Ferguson.
I can't believe Mr. Safi must have been reading my notes. Obviously, number one, it's the strategy that we're looking at. We're looking for information from the public. That the concerns raised today, obviously, and they're legitimate concerns, were the financial things. Those financial things we can address as as we get the input from the public. So. Although I've heard information, I've commented myself regarding the the financial piece, and that's one thing is is a concern to council. I still think we can review it again after we've heard again from the public. So. I've heard what we said before, and I think that proceeding with actually the report and strategy right now and going to the public makes sense to me. Thank you.
Counselor Richard.
Yeah, it would, and I, I don't have any objections to taking it out to the public, and I, I really do think, though. We adopt these strategies that we have in the past. Sort of without a central cost framework. And I think that's what the type of practice that we need to modify. We need to start saying to people, okay, if. If you want us to do climate action, this is what it's going to cost you. And so we, we should be doing this with all our strategies before we take them public. Thank you.
Counselor Whitworth.
Yeah, okay, I appreciate those comments. Doesn't sound like there's, there's five votes to. Flush this out more before it goes to the public, so I won't be bothering with the referral to the budget. I mean, I guess my, my disadvantage is I, is I read this list of stuff, and a lot of this stuff really doesn't. Pertain necessarily to climate change, so just traffic calming or. Or bike lanes and more strategies and more documents and more strategies and more documents for hundreds of thousands of dollars. I just question the process that we're in the middle of. I don't think this is going to look all that great as a climate change strategy specific to Counselor Arneson's. Concerns. I think everybody takes climate change seriously. I, I don't really know what a lot of these things are, so when they go to the public, I guess, I guess the public will know what they are, and the public can say how great they are. I also don't know, everything is what A or B or C or D. All of these things are going to be be done in conjunction with other project that doesn't get funded. And, and this is going to go to the public, and then we're basically going to be in a box to fund them as they're being presented. So I, I just disagree with the process, but I'll support council's decision here to send this to the public, in my opinion, prematurely. Thanks.
See no further discussion. Some have called a question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Carries unanimously. All right, Counselor Whitworth. To make a statement for F five or F six.
I think Ms. Bowers is well acquainted with the reasoning now, so for items F five and F six to bring a conflict of interest relating to property ownership in Fort Langley.
Thank you. Okay, good to go. Okay, F five is investing in an infrastructure program. It's a grant for a crucial infrastructure. Have a motion, please.
Move.
Counselor Davis, second. Counselor Kunst, discussion. Counselor Davis.
Yes, thank you. This grant is for the the new overpass. For the new museum facility. And I just wondered, did we get a grant for the other one that went across Bedford Landing? And did we learn anything from there that could help out? Or did we not get a grant? I'm just wondering if there's anything that we've learned from the old one, or did, did.
That was developer funded. I believe one hundred percent developer funded.
A hundred percent?
Yeah, came out of place of my house.
Yeah. Used to be ours. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Richter.
Yes, thank you. I had a question with regards to. Getting this committed external third-party funding. So where is this one point four million going to come from? Are we going to take a loan for it, or? How, how, where are we going to get the one point four million from?
I believe it's part of the community of many that Transmountains providing the contract for Langley. As they have been doing with all these projects right across where their pipelines are transiting.
Okay, and my second question is, is this the most shovel-ready or worthy project that we have?
That's. Mr. Back, I know there's a lot of other projects, but this one's been on the books for a long time.
Your worship, I think the key is ready. The requirement is to have documents and plans well prepared. This is one of the ones that are are very close to that. Other ones are much, much further behind, but much more work to do. So. Worthy is a question of council, but ready, yes, this is one of the few that are ready.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Wong.
Actually, I had a similar question about the funding, but this is an important one because we have all the other actions happening in the museum area. Also, it seems to be very much desired by our neighbors in the First Nation. And Counselor Davis, somebody made a motion at a, at a public hearing to build an overpass, and developer said, sure. And they went ahead and did it back then, the one in his one of your house, Jack. So, Mr. Mayor. Anyway, I'm very supportive of the of this initiative, and if we can get some other funds, if we're going to lever. Some other funds from the federal government, we should be so doing.
Thank you. Okay, I see no further discussions. Someone called a question. All those in favor? Opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We move on to F six. This is a heritage alteration permit at patient number one zero one one two, Fort Langley Properties Limited, nine one two.
So moved, Ferguson.
Ferguson moves it to their secondary. Counselor Kunst, any discussion? Seeing that, Counselor Whitmarsh.
There we go. Yeah, it's, just wanted to check, this, this property is is next door to some of the other ones that we. We gave a heritage alteration permit for, but this says this is. Run by Fort, sorry, Fort Langley Properties. The other ones came forward, I think, some from a different group. Is this, are they the same group, or is this the same ownership, or? I haven't heard of Fort Langley Properties.
All I can say, it's a separate corporation. I don't, I don't know if we have the list of shareholders and directors, but it's a different corporation. But I do believe they're affiliated somewhere. Mr. Back is nodding yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Arneson.
Yes, thank you, worship. Through your worship to staff, I just a comment and then a question. So probably like a lot of individuals, there's not really a lot of opposition to the demolition of this very particular building. However, I know that I have written recently to the township asking about. The condition of the area in general, sending a photo, because. I'm not sure how many people have been in the area lately, but it's rather after the demolitions of the adjoining properties. It is quite unattractive. So I'm wondering, through your worship to maybe Mr. Safi. What is it that we could do? To make sure that these type of areas, we don't know how long they are going to be in existence. And that they would provide something that was more aesthetically pleasing in a shorter amount of time. Because what currently exists in and around that area, I find is very unattractive and not in keeping with. You know, the look that we'd like to promote and have in Fort Langley.
Thank you, your worship. There is a process, your worship, with respect to. A building permit process, which a demolition permit is. Even though the, I guess, the name is suggesting otherwise. It actually forms part of our building permit application process. And that includes, that process includes the bonding that's in place to make sure that. The reinstatement of the area and and any damages that may occur as part of demolition. Processes to public infrastructure is taken care of and addressed. In the case of the area that I'm going to show on the screen now, your worship, the heritage alteration permit. That was previously approved by council, which is to the north of the subject site that you can see on the screen. The area that the, the process has not concluded yet. Staff is awaiting submission of, of drawings from the landscape architect, well, not drawings, but the, the confirmation that. I guess the reinstatement has occurred prior to release of the bonding that's in place currently. So that is the process that we currently have. I hope that answered the question that Counselor Arneson had.
Can I just ask something that is complimentary? Thank you, Mr. Safi. I appreciate that. So when language that we see refers to things like substantial compliance. It doesn't really reference a timeline, and I'm wondering if the township ever has policies. That seek to review certain of these. So if the bond is in place and we're anticipating certain works will be done. Is there generally a timeline in which we anticipate that those will actually be completed, is my question?
Yes, thank you, worship. The timeline is typically one year, unless you're talking about a development permit, which typically has a two-year timeline.
Thank you.
Counselor Wong.
Yeah, the. The home used to be very livable. It was a very, very nice home, actually. Interesting architect, I think. In the report, it says that the building is now derelict and no longer in a livable condition. But I would suggest that that's probably because the owners neglected it.
Okay, so no further discussion. I'll call a question. All those in favor?
I'm sorry, Mayor Froze.
Oh, okay, you moved it. Okay, I did see you, and it disappeared. Counselor Davis, go ahead.
Question through Mayor Froze to staff. They showed the picture of the property. And is, is, is laneway. The gazetted laneway, is that, is that on the property or off the property? I guess it would be off the property in between nine one four zero and. Yeah, there is that, is that laneway? The, the gap, I guess, yeah, they, okay. Maybe show that picture of the gazetted laneway, and then I can show you.
Sir.
Yeah, is that where twenty point one is? Well, I, where is the gazetted laneway on there?
Your worship, I believe the laneway is is not on the subject property, but rather to the south?
The south?
Yes.
So it would be in between nine one four zero and the subject? That would be correct? Because I'm thinking south, which. South to me is.
This, this is the area. It doesn't show the laneway.
Okay, I guess regardless, the building's not on the laneway anyhow.
Which not.
No, okay, thank you.
Can I see no further discussion? Someone called a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Counselor Davis, Counselor Wong opposed. The motion carries. Counselor Whitworth to come back. Okay, let's move back. We move on to F seven. It's agricultural land commission, application number one zero zero three seven nine, fourteen seventy seven to forty eighth street. Have a motion, please. Moved by Counselor Wong, secondary. Second. Counselor Kunst, discussion. See none. I'll call a question. All those in favor?
Did I get it on there?
No, I didn't see your hand. Counselor Davis?
Yeah. This piece, okay, F seven, sorry, I, on, on the report. It says here. That. Sorry, I had it marked. It's thirty nine point five four acres. And the proposed subdivision is right in half. But it's nineteen point seven seven acres each. Is there not a minimum lot size for the ALC at twenty acres?
Minimum lot size of eight hectares. So is it eight hectares or twenty acres?
Well, eight hectares, I think, is nineteen point seven seven acres. Maybe, am I right or wrong?
Your worship, you are correct in that the minimum lot size is eight hectares. And this proposed subdivision does meet the minimum, minimum zoning ballot requirements of the minimum lot size.
Okay, what's the minimum lot size then?
Eight hectares.
Okay, but it's, the whole thing is sixteen, but it's in brackets, it's thirty nine point five four. And is the ALC, say it's eight hectares or nineteen point seven seven?
That's correct. That's the minimum. It's not twenty acres, it's eight hectares, which equals nineteen point seven seven acres.
And it's exactly that? Because the area, sorry, I don't have my, sorry, I guess I was a little unprepared. If you do the math. Thirty nine point four four divided by two equals nineteen point seven two.
Thirty nine point five four.
Okay, so in total acres, it's thirty nine. Nine point. Total acres is thirty nine point five four, divide that by two. Is nineteen seventy seven, oh, I got my math wrong. Okay, so it does, nineteen point seven seven, I always thought it was twenty acres. I guess I was wrong?
It's roughly twenty acres, but the rules say eight hectares, which is slightly under twenty acres, yeah.
Okay, so slightly under eight acre, does that, does that do the math then? Slightly under eight acre, eight hectares is nineteen point seven.
Exactly eight hectares. That's the minimum.
And it's six, it's exactly sixteen hectares. Okay, okay, I'm just, I'm getting finicky. Okay, thank you.
That's okay. Thank you. Any questions? Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And opposed?
Opposed, Richter.
Counselor Davis, Counselor Richter, Counselor Arneson opposed. Anybody else opposed? Okay, motion carries. And we want to F eight. This is developed permit application number one zero one one four nine, San Hill Homes Limited, on two 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 street. We'll have a motion, please. Counselor Whitmarsh moves, secondary. Second. Counselor Kunst, discussion.
Yes, I have that.
Yeah, your hands are going up. Counselor Davis.
Yes. This has been going on quite some time. F eight. Sorry, I'm a little confused. Okay. I'm concerned about this. I'm concerned about this. It's to me, it's a buffer right on ALR. We have enough urban conflict rule, conflict. And I've walked through it and I think that it's a heck of a nice piece of property to have right beside a school. So that kids can run through the trees and I suppose break an arm if they fall off a tree, but I, I, I'm not going to support it. Thank you.
Counselor Richter?
Yeah, I'm wondering why they need to have a relocated stream in there. I, I'm really opposed to them taking a forest down, but now they're going to move a stream too, like, why?
Mr. Sefi.
Thank you, your worship. Just for clarity, your worship, this is a development permit that's in front of council. Council has already approved the subdivision, the rezoning, I should say, for three readings. It's actually on the council agenda for final reading today as well. So this is a, an application for development permit related to the streamside protection area, which should have gone concurrently with the, with the rezoning process. Had the, I guess, the requirements been more fully understood by, by the proponent and their consultant team. Unfortunately, some of the information was, I guess, not responded to in a, in an appropriate and timely manner. So now at this stage, they, they understood and they recognized the fact that there is a creek, existing creek along the future road that the township has required the proponent to construct. That's forty-four avenue connecting it from two, two, two street to the west. And as a result of that, there's an existing water course that needs to be compensated for. And that's what the DP does. It compensates for the, the relocation and loss of that, that existing green and slash yellow colored water course.
Oh, they're, they're moving a water course to the road. Is that what they're doing?
No, because of the road requirement, your worship, the road is a requirement of the township to construct the road. Not the actual, the lots themselves, but rather the road that is required to be extended. I will share the screen one more time, your worship. So this is the forty-four avenue I was speaking of, your worship, that is required as part of the subdivision to be extended to the west to connect to the existing forty-four avenue to the west. And as you can see, there's, there's an existing water course that because of the widening has to be compensated for. And that's what the, the green outline around the perimeter of the subdivision is intended to do.
So the stream is going to go around the perimeter of the of the
The stream itself, the compensation area for it. So it's actually, yeah, streams I set back, which provides nutrition.
Great, thank you.
I see no further discussions. I'll call a question. All those in favor, I think. Those opposed?
Opposed, Richter.
Opposed, Counselor Davis opposed. Did I hear Counselor Arneson?
Yeah.
Counselor, Arneson opposed. Carries unanimously. Thank you. We want to F nine. Resolution signing authority, have a motion, please.
Move.
So Davis, secondary.
Second, Ferguson.
Counsel Ferguson, discussion. Counselor Davis.
Yes. I'm, I'm wondering about this. We have one, two, three, four, five people that can sign. And it's for, you know, I, it's, is it for twenty-five million? I forgot. It's the I'm sorry. I confuse this. Is it, this is not for the twenty-five million that we have to borrow for taxes, is it?
It's just signing signatories for signing authority. I believe it takes two to sign. Comes to back signing his head. So it's to ensure that there's ensure that if one position's, for example, might retire, that there's always somebody else there. Mr. Backen.
That's correct, your worship. Just briefly, this is setting out additional positions with our ever complex and changing workforce due to retirements, we're ensuring that we have effectively bodies in the civic facility and even at operations that can sign checks as necessary from time to time. So pretty much housekeeping, other than we have a few positions so we can keep the organization rolling along.
Yes, I'm sorry. I thought this was for the anticipated shortage and we only use that once in the last twenty-five years. I looked at this too fast and made a conclusion. But I, I think that if it's for, it requires two people to sign. I think that it's not a problem. It's actually, we're not putting one more on. Is, oh, somebody's retiring.
In that, if, in case someone did, there'd be that other position.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll call a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. Move to F ten. This is the turn nineteen annual report, turn nineteen statement financial information for approval. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Davis in the secondary. Counselor Whitmarsh, discussion. Okay, Counselor Woodward?
I just wanted to ask a couple of questions on this, Mr. Mayor. In regards to, I thought it'd be helpful for me to, rather than just email staff and get the response, to have a memo created for all of councils. I had a couple of questions through Mr. Backen. Mr. Backen, could you confirm for us what the four eighty-four thousand for City Langley was? The two seventy-one, the City of Surrey, and the five sixty-five to White Spot?
Yes, your worship, just looking at my notes. What we have is City of Langley cost sharing for our annual sewer agreement. We have a sewer agreement, doesn't understand it for flow and whatnot going through the City of Langley. So that was set up in conjunction with Metro Vancouver, going to the City of Surrey. City of Surrey is annual dispatch services and as it says, City of Surrey, annual dispatch services, that would be for our fire department. And lastly, White Spot triple O's would be for the AC UCC triple O's construction at the AC UCC. So completion of that, that was our, our little franchised service area.
Excellent, okay, thank you for that. Can you confirm, so the two hundred thousand to the Gateway of Hope, that's later on in the report, that's not included in the four eighty-four?
It is not.
It is not. Okay, so that's flowing directly to the Gateway of Hope. And can you confirm when that became two hundred thousand? I thought that was one hundred thousand.
Again, this will lead more of a memory test. Originally, it was one hundred thousand dollars with the proceeds coming from the community gaming facility, then the Bingo Palace. As I recall, after that, had been in place for a number of years, there was a reduction in that because of the fact we lost the community gaming facility. A number of years of revenue were lost, and then I believe they made a presentation to the previous council and it was then increased. I think that's what it was.
Put that in a memo for us in one of our distributions, so I can have that history in writing. Is that possible?
Yeah, we can ask Karen to try to put that together as one of our last official duties. So Karen, are you up there?
I'm definitely here.
Good, that would be great, thank you. And I had one more question. Does the Langley City, do they, do they send us any money to deal with the increased prime issues related to Creekstone?
Uh, no, I don't think, I don't believe they do.
Any further discussion? I would like to, first of all, for a couple of questions, just thank staff for this report and Ms. Sinclair. This is maybe your last report to the township of Langley. So I want to thank you for your service and for providing it to us. Thank you. So with that, I'll call a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Anybody opposed? Carries unanimously. Very low. Move on to eleven, which is Development Management Process Review. So I'd just like to introduce this report. This is a report from the Development Management Process Review Committee. I was struck by myself. I'd like to thank Dr. May Holden of the Simon Fraser University Urban Studies Program. And Mr. Steve Lim, an undergraduate student, entered the program who took a lion's share of this and brought forward the report for council's consideration. And I also want to thank all the members that sat on the committee, members of the public. Which were Mr. Murray Dinwiddie, Ms. Marley Best, Mr. Sean Burchard, and Mr. Kevin Nielsen. And thank them for their volunteering to serve this committee and assistance steering it to today and to get this report. And also, I thank all members of council for the support. I know several members of council around the committee and also everyone who's available. And for the committee, for the council workshop, and your input was invaluable. So thank you very much for that. So as introduction, a report, which I was quite pleased with, it's very concise. It's not a difficult report to read. I enjoyed reading it. A lot of insight about what other communities are doing. There are several recommendations in the report and details on the report. So the motion here is to receive the mayor's standing committee Development Management Process Review Report and to endorse the recommendations included in the report under the four headings, which is seen on the agenda. And that this be referred to staff through court back to council to provide recommendations as to the implementation, the costs of the proposed recommendations contained in the report. So with that, I'd ask for a motion. Counselor Davis moves. Counselor Kunst seconds. And now discussion, Counselor Richter.
Uh, yes, I'd like to move division.
Yes, division of, of which?
All three of them.
So then the receipt, endorsement, and the And moving second, all those in favor on division? Thank you. So we'll start with the first part, which is receipt. We'll go through each one. It's our discussion on receipt. Counselor Richter on receipt, Counselor Woodward on receipt. Okay, I'll call the question receipt. All those in favor? Opposed? And that carries unanimously. And the recommendations, so discussion on the four recommendations, Counselor Richter.
Uh, yes, I'd like to remove the word endorse and insert the word, word receive.
That's what we already did, actually.
Uh, no, the second one says that council endorse. I'd like to change it to read that council receive.
I'm just going to check in this power. Is that the same as what we stated? It would be either, either we don't endorse.
Yeah, it, in this case, the, the report itself has been received, so I would consider those recommendations received. It would be a question of whether it's endorsed or not endorsed.
Yeah, so I, I think what, it's already been received, so the, the motion it's already moved second is to not, is to endorse it. So then it would be to not endorse, which is a reverse mark motion. So you, you know, I think at this point it'd be the opportunity to vote against it or make amendments to some of the wording, but it's already been received, so.
Okay, well, I, I have questions around it pertaining to the costs. I see in the third paragraph, we're going to get down to looking at costs, but again, I, I'm to me, endorsing recommendations before we know what the costs of them are is like putting the court or the horse in front of the, or behind the cart. So when I go through these recommendations and they are listed on pages six and seven of the report, recommendation number one, increase staff resources. How much is that going to cost? Like, do we know?
I would ask staff to report back and that would be a budgetary item.
Okay. Under number two, reduce redundant regulatory requirements such as GHG and water conservation process. What exactly does that mean?
Mr. Sefi. One, maybe a quick answer is through the analysis and discussion, there, there are some processes that may have been covered in another area, so this may become redundant and more of a burden. And so this is a way for staff to look through and find areas that might be addressed in one section, you're asking developer to address it one way and then you're asking them to do it second way. So Mr. Sefi, maybe you can help.
That's exactly it, your worship. Thank you for, for the comments. The recommendation would be to streamline existing processes that, I guess, might lend themselves to being more streamlined. And the example that's been provided is the greenhouse gas emission development permit requirements that has been delegated to staff. And as council is aware, another example could be some development permits that related to former character that have been related, related or delegated to staff. So the idea would be to explore what other opportunities may exist for streamlining process, processes and opportunities such as those.
Anything, just to, just to add, anything would come back to council for the endorsement. Is that correct, Mr. Sefi?
That's correct, your worship, yes.
Okay, under number three, policy updates, A, B, and C, what do we mean by consistency?
One of the, one of the, I guess, not issues that is an issue from staff perspective, but remembering or recognizing the fact that this was the work of a consultant that staff provided input into in terms of factual information, but rather very careful as to not be, I guess, even perceived as, as influencing the outcome of the consultant's recommendations in any way. So it was based on what they did in terms of consultation with the industry. And part of that consultation with the industry revealed to them that there are currently some inconsistencies that staff is actually quite aware of with respect, with respect to some of our policies. Uh, one example is how we actually calculate greenway amenity contributions, for example. So if you look at Yorcson and compare that to Carval, for example, the, the costs are different. And that's actually a, a reflection of the, the lineal measurement of greenway that's required to be obtained in each one of the neighborhoods. And as such, by nature, it would make them different than, than each other. But I guess there is an expression of a desire to see some consistency such that, you know, one neighborhood in the same community does not have a different set of rules than another neighborhood in the same community.
Okay, and what's the cost going to be for D, inclusion of an engineering service plans in all neighborhood plans?
Your worship, I guess a couple of comments. The cost, we don't know at this point, and as you said, your worship, it's, it's a, it's a to-do list, if you will, that staff will analyze more subject to council direction and provide report back to council. But the fact, I guess, that I should mention is that there is an engineering servicing report that is currently part of our process that we do as part of all neighborhood plans. And I guess the desire maybe to see that at a more in-depth level. But that's something that we can explore at a future date, subject to council direction.
Okay, and finally, number I, greater delegation of authority to staff. What exactly does that mean? What's going to be, what additional things are going to be delegated to staff?
Yeah, your worship, I think the development permit process is, is one that has been, I guess, discussed at a staff level or with staff and council previously. We have gone partway towards that, but that's something that should council feel advantageous or desirable. Something that could be done as a second phase of what we've started many years ago, with, with some development permits being approved by staff.
Okay, and for A, which is regular workshops with staff and council, why? Why would council need to be involved in those regular workshops, particularly if we're delegating more authority to staff?
And maybe I can answer that or speak to it. The discussion around the committee was, you know, there, there I guess, three main partners, maybe more. There's the development industry. There's staff and regulations and this council that all play an integral role in, in our development and in town to running this body. And as things change, certainly we learned that it'd be good that council's involved in, in these decisions and how, how it impacts and how it all works together. So not wanting to eliminate council's decisions, we already have workshops that perhaps further work, you know, workshops be included to deal with some of the ever-changing landscape that we see in the development industry. We're just focused on that one narrow part of the industry, but that, you know, we do have a lot of things at town, as council, but for development, that council should be involved in it, in those decisions, not, not sitting aside.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Woodward?
Yeah, I had some, some similar concerns to the actual wording at the moment, so it, it says that we're endorsing the recommendations and, and some of these recommendations I, I just can't endorse. Such as increase staff resources. I don't really want to endorse that necessarily. Here, I don't, I agree, I'm also tweaked by greater delegation of authority to staff without knowing what that means. So I'd like, I don't endorse that. There's a, you know, I could go through here and find some more that I don't endorse. So I didn't like the word endorse. And, and that's not, that is what the motion says, that we're endorsing. And that's not, that is what the motion says, that we're endorsing these recommendations. And I don't really wanna do that without a gay understanding of more what they are and what they're gonna cost in lieu of other projects that aren't gonna get funded in order to proceed with these. I don't wanna endorse them and then just never fund them either. I'm tired of, I'm tired of doing that. So I, I think I'd rather find some other way than endorse to say that there is some good stuff in this document. And, but not necessarily endorse every recommendation. If there's some way to proceed in a different form and get some more consensus around this, or if you have five votes, it'll be fine. But I don't wanna endorse a lot of these recommendations, sort of blanket statement of endorsing them all, so. But again, some of them are good and some of them maybe are pretty easy to get through and some of them seem like pretty significant projects that, that maybe would take a long time. So I don't know how to do that, Mr. Mayor. I can also just, just vote against it if it's done with it, it's fine. I'm a little disappointed in the process, as I think everybody knows, but I'm not gonna belabor that at this point. I think this kind of presents the illusion of reform, you know, not really any substantive actual reform that a lot of developers are talking about. Such as how every ditch in the township has become a fish-bearing stream and, you know, some of these other issues that we're facing. The size of detention ponds making projects not financially sustainable, all kinds of other issues that maybe could have been captured by this. This is some pretty low-hanging fruit, but still in the end, some positive stuff in here, but I don't wanna do a blanket endorsement of this.
Thank you very much. I don't know how else to do this. It's a report, you know, for council's consideration and certainly every member of council decided not to. That's why the third paragraph is so important, you know, really this needs to go back to staff. To do review, I think it's assist staff and to do review from the input that they got from not only the development community stakeholders, but also other municipalities and best practices. Very hard to pick, you know, which, which is good, which isn't. And I think over time, some of these ideas will flow up to council and they'll endorse them and not, you know, actually fund them. So, yeah, you're right, you know, it'd be nice to have something copied, but where do we start? And this is the start. Certainly, I believe that whatever we do in the township of Langley is ongoing, looking towards improvements. And we, that is an ongoing process. This is a start. If doesn't at this point cost any money, we are certainly looking for staff who are the experts, who are dealing with these issues every day to take this report, find out what will, what will work, come back to council with some recommendations and the costs. I think that's very important. If it means hiring another 50 people, obviously council's not gonna put that, the cost would be too high. But if it means rejecting some positions, maybe adding a position, which in the end relieves some pressure, helps smooth things along. Council would have that time to, to take a look at it. So you're right, there's a lot in here. I, I don't think we want to kind of cherry pick what was the best, but certainly I think it speaks to some of the issues that we've been dealing with, inconsistencies in some of our policies. And I know it comes up at council where we have an inconsistent policy. Changing, we wanna change it on the fly. This maybe will help give staff some direction to maybe start looking at some of those things and making recommendations to council. So that's why it's there, but the third paragraph is very important. We're not asking to spend money today. We're asking staff to do this and come back. But thank you for that. Council Ferguson.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I get into my preamble, I wanted to say with the recommendation for, for staff to report back, if I may, through, through a chair to staff, what timelines are we looking for that, if I may?
Mr. Sefi.
Without any, I guess, council direction to the contrary, your worship, in the normal course of, of the work that staff is currently engaged in, I would imagine that this would be first or second quarter 2021.
Oh, and my next question is more of a kind of procedural as well, if I may, through maybe the clerk or I'm not sure who, maybe Mr. Backen. Because it involves things like staffing and, you know, things, anything regarding property staff or other, usually we refer them to special close. Would that mean there's a special close component to this particular review or this particular recommendation?
Yes, your worship, there, there, there may very well be. It depends upon how the recommendations are, I guess, fulfilled. So you could look to see something either going to a closed session or even to a budget session depending upon that. In any event, it'll not be necessary to come back to council because of the substantive nature of some of the recommendations.
Yeah, and that, and that makes sense. And I would think that'll be a small portion of this. I just wanted to point the fact that we're, we're going through a, a development managed process review and involves staff. Obviously focusing on innovations, streamlining the process and updating policies. And anytime we can do those things, it's gonna benefit the community and benefit everybody at large, including from those environmentally as well. Anything to, to do those kind of things. I, I did say that they, because of COVID, it, it did put a bit of a challenge on the committee on, in my perspective only, Zoomer, I'm not a big fan of Zoom or computer meetings, as you can tell. But basically what I would wanna say is that, you know, let's move ahead with this. And I would thank Mr. Mayor, another question, if there's other items that we would wanna ask staff to look at, would that be something that, I mean, I'm not thinking of anything big, that's something that comes up from a focus on innovation. Would that be something you might perhaps look at as well, if I may, through the chair, either to yourself or to staff?
Well, I, I think I can answer that. Certainly, like I said, we're on continuous improvement. So anytime a good idea comes forward, this is not, this report, I'm sure it didn't cover everything that we could do now and in the future. And certainly, we want to continue to look for improvements, how we could business, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My final point, I'd like to compliment the fact that this was part of our priorities for this term. I wanna thank yourself and the staff and the folks that worked on this from the development community and also Dr. Holden and their team. Thank you.
Council Long, oh, sorry, Council Whitmarsh.
Yeah, thank you. I'm wondering, I'm, I'm wondering if the, there's three things to sort of pass here and we divide them. I'm wondering if we look at the third one first and suggest that the, this report be referred to staff to report back to council for the, to provide recommendations as to costs, et cetera. And that we, that, that, they, that allows staff to go ahead and work on those recommendations, because we're in essence saying, yeah, these are, we agree with the categories, they're good categories. It allows staff to go and come back and report us the costs and how that might be. And maybe we, we, maybe we defer the, the second one, the endorsement of those recommendations after we've received the cost analysis from staff and we can have the discussion around endorsement secondary. So that for today, we would pass two of them and then defer one of them.
Good question. I could ask, Mr. Sefi, I don't know, you know, I think if, if number three is passed, it's, it's very similar to number, number, you know, number two, that second paragraph, which is basically endorsing the recommendations that the committee put forward, but we're still asking staff to do the work. So, you know, one can go without the other, I suppose. It does the same thing, but I, this was just to add clarity for the council that what we were endorsing with these points, that this was added later, as, you know, as we discussed at the committee, was to add these so that it was very clear in what we were endorsing. Certainly, my first initial thought was just to refer this report to staff, but haven't come back with recommendations and costs. My discussion with senior staff was, well, put in exactly what it is that you're referring back to them. So the discussion around committee was to put in these four points, which are outlined in the report. So I think going with number three, only give some direction to staff and the recommendations are in the report, but this just makes it clear. That's all, we're doing the same thing, in my estimation. I don't know, Mr. Backen, with his discussions on, on the wording and what would be sending to staff. Do you have any comments, Mr. Backen?
Thank you, your worship. The, the attempt, I think, with the recommendations as laid out was to encapsulate some of the concepts that the report put forward in a language that council is more comfortable with. As we, as we looked at it, the recommendations that were put forth were fairly comprehensive, but very, I guess, broad. So as a consequence, we attempted to work with those recommendations and made the suggestion to the committee that they, these would encapsulate perhaps what they were trying to come up with. And in fact, this is what the committee came back with, with some slight further revision, so. So it's in that spirit, these were presented to represent the committee's, I guess, directions, but encapsulated in a format that would be more, I think, understandable for council.
Thank you. Council Long.
I was gonna say the same thing as Council Whitmarsh, that it might be easier just to defer the side of number two till after three. I'm not sure it's gonna be awkward with the wording, but why don't we, why don't we defer this, the second piece to after the third?
So just vote on number three first and then vote on number?
Well, no, no, I would defer number, number two, we've been talking about for 15 or 20 minutes, so after staff comes back with their, you know, with the further information, implementation costs and so forth.
I would second that.
Let's defer number two till after the staff report.
Second.
It's been moved by Council Long, second by Council Rick. I just wanted to get a comment from Mr. Backen first before we go.
Well, thank you, your worship. It's, it's more for clarity, because I wanna make sure we, we capture the direction correctly. If we're going to proceed with number three, it's, it's actually referring by implication to the substance in number two. So I think what you're asking for us to do is then is repair our costing effectively of the matters referenced in paragraph two. And then with that costing, we'd be looking to actually approve or endorse or not endorse what's contained in paragraph two. Is that correct, to the mover?
Your worship, when I read the wording in number three, it doesn't mention that the one, two, three, and four, it says to be further report.
Well, the report, the recommendations are in the report. So all we did is, so this being redundant, all we did was put in the recommendations that were in the report for clarity. So everybody knew what they were on the motion. They're already in the report. So either way, achieves the same thing. This was just for clarity. So by saying to defer to the one doesn't change the other. And the other thing I'd like to point out is that some of these recommendations may take years. It, it might not be next, you know, budget session that we look at, some of these recommendations. This is a fairly high-level look at development process in township of Langley. And, you know, I think to go back and say, well, that's what this whole thing's gonna cost, we're kidding ourselves. This is a process that could take several years to implement and one will grow on the, one will maybe grow on the other. I don't see this as a, you know, one turnkey, okay, A equals, you know, plus B equals C. It's, it's, it's a process that I think staff will have to review and they might come back with one or two or three or all of them, but I, I'm not asking that. I don't think, the intent is for staff to come back with the costs of every point in here. It's as this comes through, staff will be coming to council with reports. I think one report on this certainly, you know, could will be helpful, but I think the costing might take several years. And I wouldn't wanna put those restrictions on staff. That's kind of my thought. So there is a, so the motion, so Council Long, you still want to make that motion, but I think it's already encapsulated. This is just for clarity, that's all it was. And it got divided, but it really is one.
I'm happy to, I'll leave it to the rest of council to decide. I was gonna find a solution so we could move forward.
Yeah, it's, again, this is just to send the staff and have them come back. Yes, I'll leave it at that. Council Whitmarsh?
Oh, point of order, Mr. Mayor. Has the motion been withdrawn? Because it was moved and seconded.
Well, after listening to Mr. Backen, I didn't accept the motion. And Council Long feels we just wanna move it, so I'm gonna leave it at that. That's Whitmarsh.
Well, yeah, I certainly don't, I certainly don't want this to take years. You know, I was, I, I was, had the benefit of being part of that, of the, the development managing process task force. And, you know, I, I am certainly myself prepared to endorse it. I just appreciate that the document has a lot of material and information and maybe some members on council feel that they're not able to at this time. I certainly am, but I've been a part of it. And, and I don't want, if, if the idea is that it would take us years to get the, a report back over time on, on the implementation and costs of the recommendations, then I wouldn't be super of that. If the idea is that we could get a report back in a pattern of a few months, that would give us costs of, and the process of implementation of these things, then I would agree that we could use the idea of endorsement later, once we know that. But I don't wanna see this delayed at all more than a, a few months and certainly not by years. So, you know, I.
If I can clarify, I, I think what I meant was implementation might take years. Certainly get a report back, that's the urgent staff, first, second quarter next year. But implementation may take years. I can't, I can't second guess what council will decide.
For sure, for sure. Some of the implementation could take a long time. I, I agree with that, for sure.
That's all, that's what I meant.
Okay.
All right, thank you. With that, I'll call the question on the second paragraph. All those in favor? Opposed?
Proposed.
Council Rick here, council Woodward are opposed, that carries. Third paragraph, any discussion on that? Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
Council Woodward, anyone else carries? I would ask for one more motion, that we send a letter of thanks to the municipalities that participated and the stakeholders that participated in this and a copy of the report. So council moves that, council Davis second. Any discussion on that? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Move on to F12. This is the reopening of recreational facilities and services. And it's a report for.
We've been meeting two and a half hours. Can we take a small break, you think, or what do you?
Actually, I was gonna wait till after reports are done. So you're very close. We're, we're.
This one's gonna be a biggie.
Okay, good point. Why don't we take a break? Let's take a temporary break, come back at quarter two. So at 3:45, we'll reconvene. So this is a chance to stretch our legs. Thank you.
When are we back again?
3:45.
So, Mr. Stair, are you up there?
Yes.
So Mr. Stair is helping me with his presentation. He'll be our expert and I'll try to guide us through some of the procedural issues. So beginning with a few slides we prepared, we began with our reopening guidelines. These guidelines you've seen before, we're complying with essential health orders and work safe DC guidelines and recreation support sector best practices. Health and safety measures with the public staff are in place of making sure risks are sufficiently managed. Looking for a sensible demand for service delivery of facilities, appropriate staff resources when available and the timeline to implement the safety measures with training and modifications is required. And also considering the financial implications in the context of approved budgets subject to council direction. These are all the things council has seen before. Our next slide, also is something you've seen before. It's the various stages we've been working on through. We have the stage one, which was effectively from, from March, but ongoing. We had stage two, which started in June. We're here now really discussing the stage three, stage four transition with ultimately stage five occurring with a hope of being perhaps later this year, early next year, but it really depends upon when we reach the conclusion of the pandemic. So it's something we can't predict. We do know we're kind of at between stage three and stage four and we're trying to encapsulate that in terms of what our, our primary concern is. So our primary concern is actually that of the health and safety of all of our residents in our facilities. And the concern is making sure it's done in such a way as to both be appropriate, but also fiscally responsible. There's been some suggestions that the fiscal concerns are the overriding concern, and that's not the case. It's actually the health and safety of our, our residents. It's the primary concern. And we've had a lot of discussion too about ways to mitigate that risk from a liability perspective, such things as good ideas such as waivers or, or disclaimers or those sorts of things. Our, our approach has been a bit more cautious than that. Our approach has been one that's actually suggested. We really wanna ensure that we deal with this, the core, the substantive cause being the virus and then try to minimize the safety, minimize the financial implications after that. So it's an ongoing challenge. So in the, the next slide, we focus on some of the, the, I guess, parameters or concerns we've actually been, been looking at. So as we look at it, it, it repeats the process we've seen before, but outlines some of the, some of the opportunities or challenges we face given the fiscal constraints. So we, we begin, of course, in terms of looking at arenas, but also look at fitness facilities, recreation programs and pools. And we also tried to itemize. tried to itemize the number of guests that benefit for the use of the facility or the program over the defined timeline. And we then try to put a bit of a cost associated with it. So again, we see the arenas can actually operate quite, quite efficiently. And that's really based on a model where there's limited interaction with staff in terms of programming. This really favors things such as minor hockey associations or ringette leagues, or whatever else there may be, because they can operate fairly self-contained and have their own governing bodies that indicate their, their, I guess, appropriate protocols for reopening. We then look at fitness centers, and we quickly realize that there's a significant expense associated with fitness centers. And likewise, with recreation programs, a considerable expense associated as well. And then we move into the area of pools, which are probably the most expensive, simply because of the overall staffing costs and the experience our neighbors have seen. Our experience our neighbors have seen is that they've seen their cost per, cost per participant rise dramatically. Effectively, what they've been required to do is to staff up significantly, and then seeing a lot lower numbers, either because of the restricted numbers the health authorities provide, or because of simply the lack of demand. And they're seeing their, their, I guess, per-user costs increasing, sometimes five to seven to 10 times, simply because of those parameters. So it's, it's a reality check for us, because any, any deficit that's run has to be made up somewhere. The deficit, of course, has to be made up through the budget process at the end of the year, either by using existing resources to cover it, or by going forward, looking at additional ways to raise money, which unfortunately often relates to taxation. So as we then come to the, to the next slide, we look at some of the operational strategies for reopening that we've actually looked at. And of course, these are somewhat theoretical, but good places to start, because at each end of the spectrum, we have the concept of remaining closed, or the concept of going back to full services immediately. If we remain closed, that is not our suggestion. Very limited additional expenses are incurred. If we go to full services immediately, which again is not the suggestion, the significance of the expenses cannot be underestimated, with it potentially being up to $4 million. So we then look at something in between, and there's three we've really focused on, which is taking a philosophical approach in line with our guidelines, where we look at simply operating a facility, program, department, whatever it may be, simply where it's revenue neutral with the expenses, or perhaps rephrased, revenue positive, revenue positive, but expense neutral. What we're saying is that in some situations, we should operate simply those things that are going to be revenue positive or expense neutral. But that means we have limited ability to flip between various things that may be adjacent or very near, that don't, that don't have that, that attribute. So for example, you may see that, a good example would be you may have an ice arena open, and have a curling rink closed, but because it can't be functioning. So they're, they're, they're revenue and expense neutral on a, on a event, or by facility, or by process, or by a program need. Another option, and this is no surprise, is the one that we're really thinking is appropriate at this time, is the alternate stage three reopening. And that is really where we look at, say, groupings of things, and where we can actually make them, first of all, safe, make them effective, and make them efficient. We try to actually group things. So if there is going to be a bit of a shortfall in one area, perhaps the revenue in another area can actually make that actually work. So it's something that we have focused on, and we think that that can be done with just a modest expense, but something that kind of gives us a nice bridge from stage three to stage four. And finally, there's the complete stage three opening. Stage three opening is a bit of a challenge to us, because it does have a significant cost associated with it, even with reduced hours. It's, it's been an attempt to try to put together something that would have a broader appeal to opening. But once we start involving general public openings with the reduced numbers and increased staff necessary, it becomes a bit of a challenge. It's also augmented by the fact that our staff challenges are, I guess, amplified in this SERB environment. We're seeing a significant number of staff that are certainly cautious about their return to work from a health and safety perspective, but also from a financial perspective, where they're looking at the, weighing the cost benefits versus the health issues that we haven't had an overwhelming demand of staff seeking to return. We certainly have had some, but it's not something that's been quite in the, the way we thought it might have been. So it's, I think, a result of the SERB environment. So with, with that backdrop to it, the reports tried to highlight those things in a very quick manner. And Mr. Stare and I have gone through this fairly quickly. So your worship, subject again to your decisions as to the softball issue, perhaps we would like to have some discussion on this, or just discuss the motion.
Thank you very much. So at this point, this motion's on the table. I'm just gonna speak briefly to softball. I look at softball issues. It's kind of combined with a lot of the sports issues. We had two delegations regarding hockey, and they're no different than softball or soccer or any of the other ones. So, you know, my feeling is, once we deal with this, is I'll be looking for another motion. And that would be that we're, in essence, reiterating our commitment to work, that we support staff through the Emergency Operations Center, to continue to work at Provincial Emergency Operations Center, health officials via sport, provincial sports organizations, and Langley Sport Leagues, to accommodate as soon as practical youth games in sport. So, you know, that can come after this one, but that's in the back of my mind, subject to council's, you know, discussion and consideration. But we started off the COVID-19 journey back in March by making a motion very early on to give staff the authority to close as they saw fit facilities, which they did, and through the Emergency Operations Center, through really a careful examination of all factors. And certainly, like every one of us, we'd like to see everything open again. Yet we're restricted by safety, I think, is primary of our community, whether participants, or spectators, or staff. And also, you know, ensuring that we're physically responsible. This challenge that we have, this pandemic, this challenge that may be utilized right across Canada, and everyone is struggling on how they're going to ensure that they get through this year in a way that, you know, when things do start to open, we have the finances to do it. So lots to consider. We want to thank staff for the work that is done. I know they worked very hard over the weekend. They've been working steady. And how do we accommodate everyone's requests? And it's not easy, because, you know, we certainly all, we would like to see everything open, but that's just not possible. So this motion, really, that's on the table right now, you know, certainly helps staff guide support and continue the path that we're on. But I'm gonna open it up to, and again, there are some things that can be opened because of cost. And that's up to council. If they decide that they wish to do that, then certainly council has that authority. So I'm gonna start opening for questions to staff, and especially Counsel Long.
Okay, Worship, I'm kind of confused, because the recommendation that apparently is the motion that's on the table, does not give any direction to staff. It says to receive the report, and to receive regular updates. But I'm not sure when. I hope you'll give me the opportunity. Are you able to hear me? I would like to move alternate recommendation number three, opening strategy with some modifications.
Sure. I think what we'll do is, this motion will be the kind of the first one to go through. And then, as I said, I'll be taking, I have a motion that I can see go through, and then certainly, Counsel, I understand, Counsel Long, your motion. So we'll do this one. It's fairly basic. It doesn't, I don't think it contradicts what you want to do, but further direction would be helpful. Mr. Backman?
Thank you, Worship. I just wanted to clarify that, that's a very important point. The, the motion actually says receive, and then receive regular updates. So staff continue with the delegated authority operating under the, I guess, the Emergency Operations Center, the EOC. What we're effectively advising you today is that after, you know, a lot of thought, we're looking at alternate stage three reopening. So that would be the process we take. And as Counsel Long has said, he may wish to modify that, go with a different option. That would be an appropriate amendment to make, to make it clear in terms of which option we want to seek. Now, Mr. Mayor, of course, you could actually do the first option, and then do a second motion altogether. You can do amendments where you feel is appropriate. But I wanted to clarify that the current path staff are embarking upon, subject to council direction, is what you're seeing in the middle of the page at alternate stage three reopening.
And that's what I think, when you're ready.
So, so just to be clear, maybe if we dealt with this motion, a separate motion gives very clear direction, it would also work. And Mr. Backman says that would work. And we're not amending and amending and amending. We can just deal with this. It's pretty high level. And then we can give further direction to lower level.
He can be on the list, then. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So Counsel Whitmarsh? Sorry, Counsel Rick is next.
Yes, thank you very much. I did have some questions with regards to COVID waivers. Are we going to be requiring COVID waivers? Can we require them?
Backman?
Your worship, that, that's something we're actively discussing. We could require a waiver, or we could simply make it a condition of the ticket or program, if you will, as you often see in things such as ski lifts. That's where the law originated, in terms of on the back of your ticket, it has the disclaimers and waivers. Those can be effective at limiting our liability. At the moment, our liability is limited, I guess, temporally, meaning that right now, while we're in the state of emergency, the province has passed legislation to minimize liability. Our concern, though, as I think Counsel Rick is alluding to, is what happens when that comes off? What are we, what are we left with? So those techniques could actually work very well. As I alluded to in the communication, in the presentation, our concern, though, is, is not to be managing it at the backend. We certainly want to have those safeguards, but manage it at the front end. And we've been fairly conservative in our approach, trying to make sure that regardless of our legal position, that we're minimizing the exposure to the virus itself and the challenges it creates for the community. We continue to outbreak concerns greatly. The numbers are not going the way we hoped, and we see what our neighbors to the south are suffering. So where council's guidance is very helpful is, as we get into this, is do we wish to continue with this conservative approach, or be more liberal in our approach? And then, and I guess, you know, trying to continue to manage these things in a more liberal way, such that there is greater risk and hopefully no significant consequences.
Okay. Are we increasing our liability insurance at all? Or can we increase our liability insurance?
Presently, I think we're adequately insured. It's, it's something that we've investigated in terms of how things evolve. And it really depends as well on some of the direction we're receiving in terms of how aggressive we are in reopening facilities, and what we allow on the facilities. At this point, we're very well positioned. But if we were to, I guess, leap ahead of the curve, if you will, in terms of what other communities are doing, that's certainly something we'd be, we'd be pursuing.
Okay. And the other question that I had is with regards to where does baseball fit in? Are they, do they fit into the revenue positive, expense neutral category, or are they one of the more expensive ones to reopen?
Field sports generally would fit into the alternate three-stage reopening. It's not so much a matter of the, the cost associated with it. It's the principles we have in place. So field sports right now, and we're, and we're attempting, I would go further to say all sports, but right now, field sports are able to practice and train. The issue comes down to one of games. Are they allowed to have games? And there is some mild provision for inter-squad games, but as we have, get to have teams operating competitively, that's where we have not got to that stage yet. And what you would hear out there is that some communities have, and other communities have not. And then we could parse that further as to what would their rationales in terms of who had applications made to them and who have not. But the fundamental difference is that the players can probably operate in a fairly safe manner. As we've seen from other communities, the concern comes when we come to the spectators and how to regulate that. I'm not saying it's a concern in Langley, but as we've seen in, say, Port Moody, where they've allowed some of these, and I'm not sure if I have all of those communities correct, but where they've allowed some of these, what we're actually seeing is more fans showing up that are authorized, and some interaction amongst the fans, it's a bit of a concern, because quite often, the competitive nature of the event, people become very passionate, emotional, and thus causing some concern. So, so field sports is something to answer your question again more directly, is effectively cost neutral. It's really the issue of the competitive games, as opposed to the practices of the, the ice user groups, for example, when they begin their, their approach, they'll be effectively training for some time until they get to the point where the governing associations and the health community says that it's appropriate to have those games.
Okay. Well, I don't know if council is aware of this, but this morning, the Miami Marlins baseball team, which has played three ga, or three days of games in the reopening of the Major League Baseball down, down south, 14 of their players tested positive for COVID-19 today. So their, their season is very short-lived. And now there's talk about shutting down all of Major League Baseball again, and they just reopened it. So that's why I'm asking about waivers and also liability insurance. I don't think we can control what's going to happen out there on the fields as well as we would maybe like to be able to control it. Finally, my question concerns costs. Is it possible for us to increase our fee schedule in order to recoup these additional costs? So for example, while I'm looking here at this, the TOL preschool program, so can we increase fees for, for some of the programs like that in order to be revenue neutral?
Your worship, couple comments. In theory, yes, we can increase the, the fees and charges that may or may not require a bylaw amendment, because of the nature of our fees and charges by law. So we have to be a bit careful as to that. But in theory, yes, that can be done. The second qualification, though, is in terms of how far we take the fees, because you made a very good example of, say, a preschool program. If the preschool program can operate autonomously in a standalone location, where there's no additional cleaning charges, and it can have enough, enough capacity to operate, in theory, it could. Where however it operates in the middle of a rec center, then that means if you effectively have to open up the rec center, it becomes very much of a challenge to actually make it economically feasible, because you'd have to re-increase the rates significantly to cover the costs that are here incurring. So in the alternate stage three reopening, we are looking, I guess, on the model of trying to find things that do work economically, but we have to be careful as to the category because of the, the implications that we see if we go too far too quick.
Well, pools, I would think, is another one. I mean, I'm reading in this report that we have to limit the number of people that are in a pool at any one time, and using the change rooms and so on. So because there's going to be higher costs, are we able to pass those along in higher fees? That was just my question. Thank you very much.
So your worship, again, I guess we, we could, but it becomes a matter of what the market would bear. We have to have the same number of, say, support staff, and increase cleaning of the facility. It becomes a very, much of a challenge, because then we are only allowed to save 25% of the occupants. Or in theory, then, their ratio would have to go up four to five times for the per-user cost, to actually have us break even with our traditional subsidies, because these programs were heavily subsidized before.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yes, thank you. And really appreciate this report. Thanks to staff pointing it together. It's very complicated and challenging. And, you know, the return to play kinds of guidelines for sport are complicated. And there is a, both a, a health and safety concern, and then there's also a financial concern. And I think as council, we're trying to balance those things off. I guess my general perspective is that I do think that generally, from, on the health and safety side, you know, we should be taking our guidance largely from the provincial authorities, the provincial governing sport bodies, and Via Sport. They're very, requiring very detailed, specific guidelines for returning back to sport. I've certainly gone through with my experience here at the university, and how we're moving forward in our sports here at the university, at Trinity Western. So I kind of have this familiarity with what's happening in return to play. And I think we should be taking those guidelines on a health and safety. And so I know many sports have come up with very specific guidelines on how those are to operate and how those are to go. And I'm not sure that, from a health and safety perspective, that we at the township should have more stringent requirements than what is there in place by the governing sport bodies, by the provincial government, by the Via Sport. I'm not sure we should add another layer of complexity on health and safety. We should be seen as leading, as leading that and, and moving forward. And, and, and then, of course, we have to then consider, secondary to that, is how do we manage it from a financial point of view? And that complicates the matter. If money wasn't an issue, we'd be making different decisions. But of course, money is. And one of my questions is, when I look at the sheet that's right in front of us here, this optional strategy reopening, I look at alternate stage three reopening, and it's got a $6,000 expense attached to it. The very next level jumps from $6,000, you know, which, you know, one of, one of us kind counselors could maybe donate that 6K, all the way up to 1.23 million at the very next level. And then the net, the full is 4 million. And I'm wondering, I guess my question is, i- is there something that's in between stage three reopening and the alternate stage three reopening, that from a financial point of view, not talking health and safety, but from a financial point of view, that is somewhere in between, and maybe, maybe closer to the 6K number? But what if we're, you know, we would- But what if we're, you know, we would budget 100K or 150K or 200K? What would that look like? Do we have to jump from 6K and have to jump automatically to 1.23 million? That seems a huge jump financially, and I'm wondering if there's some in-between options that might help to move things along a little bit faster, but and yet not have such a huge expense on it. So that's just a question to staff on some in-between measures between those two.
Thank you, your worship. And yes, there is in-between. I think it's just significant to note how quickly the costs will escalate. And I'll give you one example because we have a whole number of scenarios that we've actually tried to plot out and look at. So for example, one of the components of the stage three alternate reopening is to effectively allow, say, pools to open, but on a rental basis. So that if a swim club wanted to operate and they supply their own accredited personnel, then they can operate that as a rental. It would not be open to the public. As we delve further into it then and actually look at, say, some of the scenarios that exist. I'll take back to, we'll use ACC, ACUCC, the outdoor pool as an example. If we were to base it on reopening with, say, 40 guests, and this is for the public, referencing this to the public themselves, based on opening with 40 guests with a maximum swim of eight hours per day, with 1.5 hours sessions and the 1.5 hour cleaning, the cost balloons then to $200,000 just for that for the next, I guess, eight week period. And then that's again allowing a bit of a fit-up period as well. So you can see how quickly that can balloon with a very limited service and seeing the number of people that are impacted as being relatively minor. If your Counsel's direction is to find something in between, all we really need to know is ballpark, I guess, financial considerations. We would then look at trying to get the maximum benefit for that. Part of the challenges we would face then would be trying to ascertain, I guess, the source of the funding. And that range can be done at the year end, but it's also good to get feedback from Counsel as to where the appropriate range is. Because ultimately, what we deal with today to enhance health and safety concerns by as well enhancing public health and mental health concerns by having openings is something we have to accommodate in the financial considerations later.
Yeah, I guess, so that's really helpful. Thank you for that. You can appreciate how it escalates quickly, but when we're running a lot of rec centers, particularly swimming pools, maybe fitness centers and some of those areas, they all have expenses attached to them. So we would normally have a budget set aside to manage that during the year, and we would be spending a certain amount of money every year on it. So when we talk about, for example, this, let's say, stage three reopening, 1.23 million dollar expense, is that 1.23 million dollars over and above what we would have spent during that time anyways?
Your worship, that's correct. If we take a round number of, say, $2 million is the annual subsidy, it presumes a certain level of staffing and a certain level of gate revenue that we're operating from. What occurred to us in March was we had our very first state of emergency that was municipally declared, and we expected that would give us some latitude in terms of dealing with some of the staffing issues. As you may recall, the province removed the right for municipalities to have states of emergency and provided some very good clarification for us in terms of how things had to operate. So come around March 23rd, we effectively had a full staff complement operating, and they remained effectively operating effectively until May 31st. But our revenue in that period was virtually zero. So we couldn't act any quicker because we had processes and protocols we had to go through to meet the requirements under the various labor contracts that were in place and the recognition that the provincial state of emergency did not directly and specifically did not impinge on some of those relationships. So that created a significant negative for us that we've been struggling to recover from for the entire time. And as I think as we mentioned, the number of about $55,000 to $60,000 a day was being saved, almost a million dollars a month. And early on, we predicted an $8 million shortfall if we continued to operate as we were. Right now, if we were to go back to full operations, which I think is just an example of the continuum, we would only, we recovered from about $4 million to a, from an $8 million shortfall to a $4 million shortfall. And you're quite correct then, as we look at these numbers then, as we're predicting out then, if we go forward, we're going numbers beyond our original subsidies. Our subsidy, what it was, my illustration, $2 million, in the scenario provided, would be $3.2 million as we continue to struggle with these things. So hence why we're focusing on the safety, focusing on the health, focusing on what's happening in the region internationally, but trying to be fiscally responsible so we're not saddled with some of the huge numbers our neighbors are looking at. Suri rep reporting $40 million, having a great deal of difficulty trying to recover that with their operational levels. And other municipalities going through the same thing. So it is a significant challenge we face until we get to a recovery stage. And that is in and of itself is a challenge because when numbers do recover and when we're fully open, we don't expect to come back to the original numbers at all. We'll have built-in operating costs that are required under health and safety guidelines, workers' compensation that we must maintain. But the customer base will likely be much smaller until there's greater confidence at the end of the pandemic.
Okay, one last question. I appreciate the answers. In alternate stage three opening, as I'm reading the report, most of them are suggesting, there's a suggestion to start in September for ICE, maybe curling in October. I'm wondering about if we were to, for example, support that alternate stage three opening, but ask for the ACUCC pool for pool rental groups to open ASAP. And I'm wondering if that would be possible, and if so, what would the timeline be that the pool could be open around the way into September? Could it be open in, I don't know, two weeks or, you know, that sort of thing? What, is that something that it would be possible to open the pool for pool rental groups earlier than September?
Your worship, thank you. That's correct. The arenas, we've always contemplated putting the ice in close to the regular schedules. We'd heard the concerns of the delegations we've heard previously, so we're working towards that. In the situation of arenas, say, for example, GPRC, we know that the arena operations could help facilitate the curling operations. And the challenge really with the curling is that their demographic of user is much different than the ICE arena's demographic of user, and they simply may not want to come back all that quickly. So we've got to be very careful in monitoring that. Likewise, I guess with pools, the model we referred to for ICE is we're effectively saying here, you rent the sheet, you rent the facility, you know, you follow the safety plans and you can then operate. Our involvement is greatly reduced. We'd look for the same thing for pools as well. We would look to actually go to the swim clubs or others that are out there and say, okay, now you can operate, but we want to do so in the most cost-effective manner. So you provide the lifeguards, you provide the certifications, we'd have a minimal amount of oversight or we would try to. That being said, though, even with that, the timeframe to open is tight because of the staffing constraints. Even to have minimal staff onsite, we're still estimating probably 10, well, more likely 14 days is our best case because we have to actually bring them back. We have to, A, engage them, make sure that they are available, and then go to the next level, which is train them in the health and safety protocols that are in place to bring them back even with minimal skeletal staffing. So yes, it could be accelerated, and I think I'm already concluded in the alternate stage three reopening is that concept. The hesitation you're hearing is because of the staffing that we're looking to come up with and to work with the user groups themselves to make sure that they're prepared to take on some of the responsibilities we've talked about.
Okay, thank you.
Jack, you're muted.
Too many screens. Counsel Davis, you're up.
Okay, thank you very much. We're put in a real tight spot here. As mentioned, you know, we're not Bonnie Henry, we're not the province, and we're not doctors, and we have a decision to make here. But I just, I've gotten 58 emails since one o'clock saying reopen, reopen, reopen. So what I'm concerned about is a couple of things. Maybe there's a couple of things on here, and it's a reopening stage, and I heard that we might look at this a little different. But Counsel Rick brought up the waiver thing. When the sport, I take my daughter up, she's been going back to the horse barn for six weeks now. We had to sign a waiver. Only her and a trainer are allowed in, and we have to pick her up and take her out of there before another student comes in. Same as kayaking, they've been practicing. We had to sign another waiver, and Bedford Landing's not open. So they go down to the dyke in Glen Valley, and they take their, there's provisions, they take their life jacket home, and they wash up the boats and all that. And I understand, like, my son's ball hockey, that's a little different. They all cram up into a penalty box. Softball, and I think we're going to touch that, but softball, they don't need to go into the dugout. They don't need, the same as, as, you know, can they not sign a waiver? It's on a playing field, it's a huge playing field. Softball, they don't need to go to the dugout. They could line up, oh heck, 100 feet or 200 feet, and as far as the comments I heard from Mr. Backham saying that sometimes it's a very emotional and parents go there and very passionate. You know what? It's a risk. Do we even need parents there? And I know I'm going to get in heck from that. But you know what? We need to get the kids back into sports. One parent's all you need, and they can watch out in left field. You know, so my whole thing is, I hear from the province that, you know, fields are different. Once you get into an ice rink, do we even need to open up the change room? Now, that's going to be difficult because everyone's going to come down on me. But if you want to minimize the risk, just don't open. Or we abide by the rules and regulations, rules that are coming out. And I would much rather my son play ice hockey and maybe have to change and sit up at home and put his skates on, you know, way far from anybody, and I might not even get to watch him, but at least he's involved. And I think that, I think we've got to get the kids kind of opening up here, but at what degree? There was one thing that we're waiting for a report, or not a report, we're waiting from the provincial government. And I just wondered, Mr. Backham, maybe through the chair, if you could maybe, that report, can you tell us what, I have a couple more comments, what that report is that we're actually waiting for and when we might see it? And I know, I think I heard you say we won't be getting it. Well, it's not coming yet.
Your worship, I'll start off and I'll ask Mr. Winslade, if he's out there, to be ready to jump in as well on this because he's done a lot of research into some of these issues. So in no particular order, we're certainly aware of the emails Counsel's receiving, and that's why we tried to articulate in the reports around page 16, how they're being organized. And that's just something the Counsel can take under advisement. It's certainly a valid perspective to have. As we see from our report as well, the staffing levels are a challenge because, while we certainly do have some staff that are eager to return, we're not being inundated with that given the SERB environment, but that certainly can change. As we go forward then, in terms of the, as you used the example of ice hockey, we're trying to put all on a level playing field in terms of practices and workouts and, I guess, inter-squad scrimmages within the team itself so they can actually engage in it. It's the actual joining of actual club play versus other teams that not only takes the number of players and doubles them, but takes the number of parents and doubles them. So it becomes a bit of a challenge in terms of how you regulate that and how you tell parents that, I'm sorry, no, you can't attend, you can only drop off and pick up, and how do you feel about that? So those are things that we need to take into account as we go forward. And you're quite right, it is well beyond simply being a monetary concern. It's trying to figure out what the right decision is in the circumstances, given everything that we're seeing and experiencing and trying to be safe. Because while we can have indemnities and we can have disclaimers and waivers, I guess the question is, is that going to satisfy our feeling if someone does become ill? That is the primary issue here, preventing illness or just preventing liability? And there's no easy answer to that. I mean, it's a balance. So you certainly understand that. But we're trying to understand how we can minimize both, that is, stop the problem before it becomes necessary to have a waiver or a release. But that certainly is something we would likely look to do to augment our position. And I think Mr. Winslade's out there, and he's actually done a fair amount of research on this, and if he's out there, he may want to make a few comments.
Thank you, Mr. Backham. We're jumping on a lot of different issues here, indoor and outdoor and different scenarios. But to try to touch on a few of the key points that have been brought up, and they've all been great points. I guess the first one for Counsel to understand is that this is a very different time, as we all know. And one of the challenges is there isn't actually a real governing body. And the province is, and the health orders that come out, we have to abide by. And for us as the township, we have to abide by WorkSafe BC's guidance and restrictions and guidelines. And those are continually changing. But ultimately, other than the province and WorkSafe, we are actually responsible for these situations. And Dr. Henry was on earlier this afternoon, and she talked about her newest order that's coming out. And it's clearly the responsibility of the owner of the property for all these different situations. So just important for Counsel to understand that, that ultimately, the township is the governing body in this case. Everything else you'll see, you'll hear about Via Sport, provincial sport organizations, local sport organizations, and all the other things that are out there. They're all very clearly worded if you read them as guidelines and framework and advice. And they're great, but ultimately, we need to be responsible for our decisions. We can't rely on those guidelines necessarily as our answer. We do relied on them for advice, though. The question around Via Sport, Via Sport returned, or sorry, issued their return to sport guidelines document. There's a version one that exists, is out there, and that's what most sport organizations are using for their guidance right now. They have indicated, they've said that there is a second version of that coming out that's going to make modifications. They indicated mid-July, and obviously we're past mid-July, it's being delayed. Our experience shows that usually when there's delays, it's because there's further discussion happening. So we feel it's important to be able to wait and get a good understanding of what those provides guidelines are going to be before we make any changes. So that's a belated first point in terms of the governing body. The second point for us is our EOC process. I think it's on page three of your report. There's a chart that's included there. It's a little bit difficult maybe to read, but we do have a fairly developed process. And our EOC team, as well as our Township Restart Team, as well as Mr. Backham, Mr. Seifi and myself, are all involved. We have quite of a detailed process, and we are keeping public safety at the forefront. Mr. Backham just mentioned that in terms of trying to do our role in terms of stopping the spread and ensuring our public safety and our staff safety. So that's always number one in terms of our decision-making. The other issue we have, and again, this is where indoor facilities and outdoor facilities diverge, is kind of ensuring compliance. Counsel Davis just raised a few good points there regarding arenas. And you can change in your car, put on your skate guards, walk with your skate guards to the rink, you know, play hockey, and head back out to your car, which is what is kind of the common standard for arenas. When we get to outdoor, and there's staff there that can enforce that. When we get to outdoor facilities, we have over 100 parks in the township of Langley. It becomes a lot harder to have somebody there ensuring or encouraging, I'll say, compliance. And we do have some particularly challenging things already in our outdoor spaces. You know, we're not without our challenges. We're doing our best. We're trying to allow a really good return, both to formal activity and informal activities such as playgrounds and spray parks. But it's not perfect what's happening, I guess, to Counsel understand. So we do have some enforcement, compliance-type challenges that go on. And then I want to get specifically to ball. Mr. Backham already talked a lot about the difference between practice and games. And our playing fields, we've already opened our community parks and a lot of our specific facilities for training and for individual practices and return to sport. We've stopped short right now of games. The attendance at games is definitely an issue. The intensity of voice projection, you know, we have all kinds of considerations. You've heard Dr. Henry talk about when you're projecting your voice is when it can be spread. Generally speaking, spectators aren't projecting their voice during a practice, but they are yelling encouragement during the games. So things change when you move from training to games. The other thing is we have multiple fields together in many locations. It's not just one. The other thing is we have multiple fields together in many locations, it's not just one ball diamond. We have two, three or four ball diamonds, all in immediate proximity to each other, all potentially being used. So a lot of considerations there. And I'll just conclude by saying, as I believe um our E O C team outlined in their response to to ball specifically. Um is that we are more than likely going to be proceeding in the very, very near future with allowing um games for softball, basketball. Um but focused on youth and definitely with spectator restrictions because that is our our concern in terms of the attendance at the parks. So you know, again, all the way back to the start, the township's trying to do what we believe is right. With our E O C team and our staff restart team and with safety at at the forefront. So that's a very long-winded way of hopefully touching on a whole bunch of the questions that were asked.
No, that was really good, thank you. I just have a a question that I maybe don't understand is when you say softball. Uh in the near future, what what would you be, or 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 will, or Mayor Feroz, maybe the question is, are we uh some uh. Are we going to do a motion with softball and then I have a comment?
I I think it probably applies to um to all of the ball, youth, youth sports. And my motion is gonna be very general for all youth sports and uh not, I don't. I'm still of the opinion that uh our E O C and staff are the best positioned to make these decisions. And uh and so that, you know, I wanna continue that delegation to them and because they're constantly reviewing all the information. So my motion will be more general, but it's it's to all sports and includes softball, basketball, for girls and boys.
Okay, I guess my my comments, um I'll leave for that. But one thing that after Mr. Back and then uh Mr. Winsley is. Number one, safety. It I I don't wanna see anybody get COVID because they were hanging on the wires at a softball game and then they get sick and die. I know I'm not sensationalizing and I'm not trying to put paranoia out there. But the decision that I make here is uh would be for common sense, like um you know, we we. The kids playing the game, be spread out all over the field, the it's the spectators that uh you know, I can't keep my mouth shut when I'm at a game. I don't, if I don't even know anybody, I'll rah rah rah. So that's why I think safety is number one. And as a council, we've gotta live with uh with these COVID numbers in the township of Langley or in the Fraser Valley or B C period. Anyhow, I'll I'll wait, I'm interested to hear your motion, thank you.
Counselor.
Oh, hi, um yeah, so I have a few um comments. Um is there, thank you, uh um Mr. Winsley, that's uh helpful information because I did go through the via sport. Uh frequently asked questions and it was actually quite, it wasn't clear. So I could see if you're a baseball player or you're, you know, wanting to get back and you followed all the guidelines. And it even says somewhere about um uh the provincial orga- sport organizations. The question, are approvals required on return to sport plans? And it says that uh that doesn't require government approval. So um all these different questions on there frequently, it it was really quite some of it contradictory in my opinion. Um the question I have is actually uh in in on their page fourteen, um and it's about. Is COVID nineteen covered under insurance and it's to do with insurance and liability? And it says it's important to know that most insurance policies exclude coverage related to communicable diseases or pandemics, including directors. And officers of insurance. Um so therefore, return to sport discussions should include acknowledgement of the risk um to resuming that sport. And then there's also the question, who is covered under the mysterious order? And it says to be eligible or must uh organizations must be a registered non nonprofit society. So would we require that these organizations, that they are a um a society in good standing, should something happen? Um just as another level of protection um for the organizations that play sports in our community? So um I have lots to add, I mean, I I want the kids to go back and and play. Um but yeah, I recognize the position that we're in as far as safety. And um just, yeah, just that question about liability and insurance for our organizations that play in in Langley.
Okay.
Uh thank you, your worship. It's a bit complicated because. Where we stand right now is the provinces have effectively said for governments and not-for-profits. Uh there is no liability uh for opening things due to COVID. Um where it gets a bit complicated is that order only remains in force and effect until the state of emergency is lifted or somehow modified. If we go to that timeline, then you're quite correct, we then come to the next level is, well, there must be insurance in place for it. And the short answer is generally, there is not insurance in place for it, um unless you get special risk insurance. Uh so what the what the operating entities, the associations and clubs are seeing is that there's gonna come a day when the, there could be some liability. Uh unless their uh well, as their their policies are unlikely to cover it unless they're specially modified to include it. And and that's gonna be a challenge because depending upon the level of the pandemic, it may or may not be something that's easily attainable. But the fundamental question you raise is then, does your ordinary insurance policy cover you for these sorts of uh pandemics? The answer generally, subject to seeing the insurance policy is no, it does not. And that means that directors and officers of not-for-profits could face uh liability, uh at least alleged liability. Uh for opening or doing for things that are related uh to this COVID environment, uh where they think they may have insurance, they may not. Unless they actually get the special risk insurance that would remove that exclusion from their policies.
Okay, so I think it's really something that is is super important that um anyone going into down this road, that they understand what the risks are. So that um would would we be then be held liable if they don't have insurance?
Well, as Mr. Winslet mentioned, the it's the owner of the infrastructure or the field itself that would have the liability. Uh but that's what Mr. Winslet's indicated through the provincial health uh ruling, that's the owners. That's why the provincial bodies do not have uh uh I guess any uh explicit liability for simply putting in the rules and regulations at play. But that means that the local organizations very well could have that liability. And if the was on our field or in our our situation, then it's there, then if they are under insured, don't have insurance, then it would likely revert to us if there was something. That created a liability, Mr. Winslet did have a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Backen, sorry, I was just gonna uh say that before a group is allowed to book one of our facilities and participate. They do have to go through a process that they would probably say is quite onerous. Um and includes a checklist of items, including everything that's required by the province in order to be covered off under that um insurance waiver. So we do check that they have.
Okay. Okay, so that that's uh important, just even for, we don't want our organizations now to be at risk of all of a sudden not being able to be an organization anymore because of this. So anyway, those are my comments and um, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Long, are you ready for motion or for through Ferguson first?
I certainly am, and I appreciate all the discussion that's happened, but it's it is a very frustrating. Because we're talking about so many issues, I wonder if we can just maybe focus on the uh what's in the report, which is the ice arena and the outdoor pool. And I never advocating for the outdoor pool all along, I'm not talking about indoor pools, so that is a whole different thing. So I was. Stage three modification, are you ready for that, your worship?
Uh no, I just wanna go through the speakers, it's just more of a, because it's such an important topic, uh I wanna, we do have a motion on the floor. Uh still, a motion on the floor needs to have a question called on it, so this is more of a discussion.
All right, well, then I, yeah, I think maybe it'd be good for us to focus on the pools and the arena and then.
That's right.
Ball and the others.
Yeah, we'll deal with the motion that's on the floor right now.
Waiting.
Yeah, just, yeah, we'll get to Counselor Ferguson.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I know that, I hope you didn't miss me because uh uh I I I lo- I got lost in Zoom.
We always miss you.
And when I, when I left the meeting, the staff were talking, when I came back, staff were still talking, so that was about an hour. But any, anyway, uh I didn't wanna point, I mean, there's, it all comes down to the one side, the financial side. And the other side on safety and other uh rules and regulations. And of course, insurance things, it's been mentioned, I can't mention anyone, I I really can't discuss anymore, it's already been mentioned. But uh I look forward to seeing the motion that's on the table, thank you.
That's arson.
Thank you, your worship, um I'm not sure that I have that much more to add, it's been an interesting discussion. And as others have observed, very challenging. Uh I just wanna put forward a couple of comments from my own uh thought process about these. Because you know, as it's been alluded to, we've received a a lot of requests from a wide variety of user groups. And um I I I do understand and I'm totally supportive of the fact that there are guidelines, however enforceable or regulatory they are. And that the um township of Langley is very prudently following those and should do so. Um so I'm appreciative of the staff report and looking into options, which I will be supporting. I guess what, I'll give my fundamental concerns, and probably there's three of them at this point. Just the idea that our facilities, although it's a very novel situation, I'm sure this has never happened before. But just the duration and that lack of certainty for some, I think, makes this a more problematic situation. Um if there was some sense that, for example, uh the swimming pool would be open next week. I'm just talking from experience with the libraries finally being reopened. And also being on the receiving end of very many emails demanding that our libraries be open. So I I'm very aware of the protocols and process that one has to go through to make sure that staff is safe. That you know, there's an abundance of caution, that everything is done to make sure that we're not inadvertently um spreading more COVID. That would be very counterproductive. But I do get the sense that if we're just looking at the economics of the situation, and I haven't really done the number crunching myself. And I know that there's a high degree of subsidy, but there is this question mark in my mind about people having paid taxes for services. That they feel, whether they're right or wrong, there's an entitlement to that. And now, under these extraordinary circumstances, I feel that there is a big question mark about the fact that we have these extraordinary. Facilities and infrastructure that would be available, but now it's not available because of COVID. And you know, what should we do about that and what would that look like? Um I had another thought, and it may not actually fly because we've talked quite a bit about insurance. And who would be responsible if somebody was to uh have COVID, to get in contact and contract COVID as a result of being in one of our facilities? But I I'm of the opinion that there must be some assumption of risk that would have to be applied to a situation like this. When people are actively wanting to follow some pursuit. And in the knowledge that this could happen, you know, it wouldn't be anybody's uh surprise, unfortunately, that it could happen. You know, that rather than just focusing on waivers and exculpatory clauses, maybe we should just consider that there, there is this element. And I'm not always agreeable to it, that now people have a certain right to do particular things. And when they run up against the um the hard wall of what's not allowable. It sometimes makes people e- even more emboldened or encouraged to do something like that. Because they feel like it's it's their right to do that. And just my final question, um through your worship to staff. I did read recently that the province has some monies that they are going to do matching funds with the federal government. And one of the things that it was meant to do, I believe the total amount is a billion dollars, is to provide uh financial aid. To local governments to ensure that certain, I'm gonna call them basic services are allowed to continue. So I did wonder whether or not uh our recreation facilities might generally fit under that category. Of being able to be subsequently funded in order to address part of the uh the financial impact of opening. Thank you.
So I think I need to um speak to part of that. Maybe looking at funding essential services, making sure essential services uh continue to operate such as transit. Uh and such as some of the other services in this place, give them a plan funding. Maybe Mr. Backen has some comments on that or not, if I could, discretionary.
Uh thank you, your worship, you may have been breaking up there, but we'll try to encapsulate what you said. It's our understanding as well that the primary purpose of the founding counselor Artson is referring to is for essential services. So you're gonna see it for fire, police, water, sewer, storm drainage. There's many communities out there that are suffering significantly with trying to maintain the basic services. Uh the basic essential services. Once we get to the next level, then we start talking about parks and other amenities, and then after that, we tend to come to recreation. It is possible that the uh the monies may go that far, but I would say unlikely at this point. Because to date, the government's focus has been on the core services, as we've mentioned, perhaps augmented with some of the um. Uh social safety net issues we're seeing for homeless and other areas. So it's it's a possibility, but I would say it's something that we'd have to actually look into more more so once we have details of the initiative.
Thank you, uh Counselor Richter.
Yes, uh Mr. Mayor, just as a point of clarification. Uh I know that Counselor Long has indicated that he's got a motion he wants to put forward. And I think I heard you say that you had a motion that you'd like to put forward. Could we hear the motions and perhaps see which is the best one?
Well, there, one does, we'll we'll deal with the one that you moved uh the one that's in front of us. So that's, I'd like to deal with that first, and then I'll go to Counsel Long, which really is separate from the one I'm doing. Uh it's two different motions, but I will go through that. So why don't we call the question on the motion that's on the table, and that's what's in front of us on the agenda? So I'm gonna call the question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here's unanimously. So uh just, I'm gonna go with Counsel Long to put his on first, mine will really relate to that we continue to support uh our staff with E O C. Uh to work with the various agencies and to get support going as soon as possible. Whereas I think Counsel Long's deals more directly with our facilities as is in the report. So Counselor Long?
Well, thanks, your worship, and yeah, this uh this motion is regards the chart that was put up, and it talked about alternate stage three opening strategy. And uh but there are a couple of twists in this that were not uh explained by Mr. Backen. And I guess I I'll put the motion out, but I'm gonna have to get him to explain a couple of areas. Uh that differ from the strategy that was put on the chart and the amounts of money that was uh around it. But my motion then is to open the G P C arena for ice rental groups as soon as possible. Open the A C U C C arena for ice rental groups as soon as possible. To open the G P C curling rink for rental groups starting in October, and that's what the report already says. And to open the A C U C C pool, public and pool rental groups as soon as possible. And that's my motion, and I'm not in, I'm not including the other two pools because I'm only favoring outdoor pools at the moment.
So just to be clear, you're, what you're suggesting is alternate stage three opening strategy. With the addition that the A C U C C pool uh be open for rental groups and the public.
That's right.
As soon as practical.
Potentially, that's that's the difference. And 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 the other difference is that the report said opening sometime in September. I'm asking for it to be open as soon as possible, hopefully it'll be sooner than September for the pools.
Yeah, the pool, and it takes a probably minimum two weeks, might even more. So Mr. Backen, um just before I kick the secretary, Mr. Backen, the cost, um I know we talked, how would it look for the public? I know we talked about the rental groups, but opening uh the outdoor pool for the public, and other municipalities have done it, uh where they. They have it open to change rooms, people come, the towel and bathing suit ready to go, and they leave, they don't, they maybe uh they have a washroom open. But that's about it, uh so in other cities, municipalities have done that, any information on that that you can provide us? Maybe you're Mr. Winslet, on how that's been working?
So your worship, I'll I'll start off because I think there's some components to this, and there may be a dividing line, there may not be. But I think what Counselor Long is ensuring is that the alternate stage three include opening to G P R C and A C U C C ice and curling. And effectively, that's something we already contemplated in alternate stage three, but I think it is appropriate certainly to to be specific to reference that those be included. Uh or to further enhance or to ensure they're included. That's kind of your first grouping. Your second grouping then is the pool open to public and private. Now, that is a extension of where we were at before, and that extension then would uh likely come at an additional cost. I'm gonna check my notes here, again, for a limited opening, that would be based on opening with forty guests maximum, public swim eight hours per day. Uh with the one point five hour sessions, allowing for a half hour cleaning each side uh for the uh for the month of, I think for a single month. And I'll have to ask Mr. Stare to clarify this, that would be two hundred and five thousand dollars. And Mr. Stare, is that two hundred and five thousand for the just uh one month or is that for two? And Mr. Stare, is that $205,000 for just one month, or is that for two months?
To the end of the year, I thought.
No, no, certainly not beyond October. This is a, I think this may be a monthly cost. Mr. Stare, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Yeah, no, that's the total cost for sixteen weeks, so starting September, running to the end of the year.
Oh, I stand corrected. I stand corrected. Thank you.
So councillor Long, are we clear that's the motion that you have? I think it's clear for everyone, it will be open as soon as possible, practical, let me do this staffing issues.
If you have a second, or?
Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure. So councillor Whitmarsh seconds it. So discussion on this motion. So councillor Davis.
Can I continue to?
Sir, councillor Long, you will get, you will just speak to it.
I'll talk to it a second time if I'm given the opportunity. But, you know, Dr. Henry said that we should be opening pools on June the tenth. And certainly, there was mention in her comments about not having change rooms, having new protocols, for sure. We've had a good discussion about no concession stands either, and a limited amount of sessions. Now, staff are saying one and a half hours, it may only be an hour. Quidlam only allows you to swim for forty-five minutes, which I don't know how much fun that would be. But I just wanted to tell council that my research shows that Burnaby has opened three out of four of their pools. Kilowack has opened their pool, Quidlam has opened two out of their three pools. Delta has opened both pools. Maple Ridge has opened its pool. New Westminster has opened two out of the three pools. Portquidlam, two out of their four. Port Moody, one out of two. Richmond, one out of two. And Surrey has opened all eight of their pools, and Vancouver, four out of five. So I, and of course, as you know, Langley City is open as well. But I really think that this is an important activity for our citizens. I understand that there's some costs involved, but we certainly need to provide recreational opportunities for our kids and for adults, everyone. A lot of people in Aldergrove are more elderly and use the pool for their laps for me early in the morning. And I've had a number of people tell me how that's been very detrimental. Well, that they really look forward to that exercise each day when they haven't been able to do for a long time. There's lots of good reasons to do this. Certainly not saying that we're going to compromise any safety or anything else that we've heard today. Yes, there's some costs involved, but you know, the encouraging part of the report showed that there would be a positive cash flow from the arenas, so maybe that'll help balance out. And perhaps, as Mr. Bakken had indicated, there may not be enough considerable uptake in some of these other pools. But Aldergrove Pool, it's a very popular pool, and I think it will, it'll do very well in pulling in the numbers that would be required to perhaps keep the cost at the minimum. So I'm hopeful that we can proceed on this, your worship, and that the council will support getting these pools open. Thank you.
Councillor Davis?
Hi, thank you. Of course, that, like, no washrooms. As you mentioned, no concessions.
No, I said no concessions. There has to be washrooms.
Well, it can be washrooms, but no change rooms.
So I think we'd leave that to staff to come up with a safety plan. I don't know, we want to micromanage what's open, what's not, so.
Just, I'm going to throw this in there. I got two other things. First thing is, how does a lifeguard get around this? I guess they have to use masks. If they do, if there's a problem, they have to use masks, do mouth to mouth. Okay. We have been closed, questions were marked, maybe I missed this somewhere along that line. We've been closed March, April, May, June, July, and we've been on skeleton staff. So we've, not that this is critical, but we would do maybe an estimation of the pool, because we're not fully staffed, so we would have saved a bit of money in some of the ice rinks and that sort of thing. So not that that helps out, but then, well, maybe the question, maybe how much money have we saved?
How much money have we not lost?
So, your worship, again, remember, we start with an average subsidy of, each facility has its own budget. As I suggested before, we then had a full complement of staff, approximately four hundred, working the hours necessary, the hours they were, I shouldn't say necessary, the hours that they were traditionally booked for March, for the balance of March, for all of April and all of May. So with virtually zero revenue coming in, we had those expenses continuing. As we, as we hit the beginning of June, then we've had skeleton staff, a much reduced staff, but again, no revenue coming in. And there was a bit of a phase in through that. And the implications of that were left us where we're at now. Whereas if we were to remain closed, and we're certainly not going to be doing that, we would probably break even.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, there is a echo. I can't hear Mr. Bakken.
I might be my mic on.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
There we go. There we go. So I think by year end, then, if we continued on that previous path, which of course is unrealistic, we would have been in a break even situation. If we opened up a full opening, assuming it was going to be September, October, November, December, this is an illustration, with the current amounts, we would likely then be in a four million dollar deficit. So the monies tend to average about a million dollars a month for full openings. The discussion here with councillor Long's motion, though, is very restricted. It's for the ACUCC, reference to the hours I've suggested, and Mr. Stare has confirmed and clarified that that's going to, to year end, cost us about $200,000 for a limited schedule.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councillor Goodst?
So if we're, where do the user groups come into this? Because if we're going to be not sure and super comfortable opening up to the general public, because if we're going to limit the time and it's going to be an hour and there's no change rooms, people are going to be either waiting outside or in a lineup, are they going to wait in the car? I can just imagine that the stress and the, you know, how to manage the people coming in and out safely. So, but I guess my question is, does this include user groups? And what is limited? Is it like from one to four? Is this, you know, so we're not doing anything in the morning? What does this look like?
Mr. Bakken?
So, your worship, if we could back it up one step, we would say the rental model that was in place would probably work for the clubs and/or parties that wish to rent the entire facility, but provide some of their own staffing needs. That would include, for example, in pools, having lifeguards who are trained and for people that have the right certificates to act as such. We're seeing this as being an additional layer beyond that, that would actually have it open to the public, which means we must staff up, so we have to find the staff, train the staff, back into some of the, the, with the personal protective equipment and processes that need to be in place, and go to the next level then, in terms of being able to operate the facility or operate parts of the facility, and engage in regular cleaning activities. As was referenced, this is an illustration, our library budget, the cleaning bills have roughly tripled in anticipation of the enhanced cleaning that's going to be needed going forward. So those form part of the costs that we're going to be seeing. So the public adds that component to it, and again, it's limited to basically a, looking at my notes again, based on a forty guest maximum with eight hours per day, with some time before and some time after, generally limiting it to 1.5 hours per session. So you get forty people turning over every 1.5 hours and paying an additional fee that would be in place to bring those numbers in. If we simply opened it up for eight hours and people could stay the entire time, that would add this more significant cost. We've got to try to balance that into our model going forward.
Thank you. Councillor Richter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just some follow-up questions on this. Are we dividing that motion to do? Because if, I was wondering if we could get the chart back up that had the layout of the steps?
Just about getting that. Councillor, right, Monsieur, right? Your hand is up there.
Oh, yeah, I was just going to wave first.
Okay.
Okay. So my question is, I think what this motion is doing, and I just want clarification on it. We're doing the alternate stage three, but adding the Aldergrove Pool. So the alternate stage three, as I recall, had a total additional cost of $6,000. We've just found out that to do the pool for basic opening from now until December would be an additional $205,000. So are we looking at a total cost of this motion of $211,000? Is that, is that a correct?
Yes, that's correct.
That's correct. Okay. Now, will we be requiring waivers?
Your worship, I would suggest that there would be some sort of change to our ticketing policy that would actually cover that off. I can't say whether it'd be a waiver or simply a disclaimer on the back of the ticket itself, if you will. That's where the contract entered the facility. That would be a bit of a work in progress, but I see us doing something to augment where we're at right now.
Okay. And the other question that I have, how are we going to do COVID follow-up? Like, for example, if I go to a restaurant now, they take my name and my phone number, and if anybody in that restaurant comes down with COVID, I'm notified. How, is that going to work for the pools and the rinks too? Like, how are we going to know if one of the kids in one of the groups comes down with COVID? And so the whole group's been exposed to it.
So, your worship, that's correct. There has to be a tracking mechanism where it's actually clubs or teams. It's fairly easy to have them supply the list of the names and the contact information. When you come to the general public, then, in our example of forty people per session, we would have to actually keep the information such as a restaurant would, to make sure we have that ability to connect. And then we'd have to try to divide up the sessions to see which forty people are in. I guess it would be our ten or twelve sessions that may occur each day, or the other way around. It'd be likely six or five or six sessions that occur every day.
Okay. Now, if we don't get the anticipated use that we thought we were going to get, are we going to shut them back down again? Because, I mean, we're thinking we're going to have forty swimmers an hour for eight hours. What if we only get two swimmers an hour for eight hours? What happens?
So, your worship, right now, the way it's framed is we'd be coming back in October to get to the next level, the next visitation on that. If there was less users than anticipated, that would affect our bottom line, because we can see from the model, the assumptions we're using. If it was dramatically less, I think we'd probably just come back to council and point that out. But we would be, I think, assuming we try this model till the end, as was suggested in the previous slide, the October timeframe.
Okay. So how many additional lifeguards or how many lifeguards and staff are going to be needed for forty swimmers?
Mr. Stare, and I guess the question is, what's the minimum number of staffing we can have to open the pool, regardless of the number of swimmers that are actually in it? Because I don't, I think forty is just our limitation in terms of the health officer. But what do WCB require us to have on staff if we're going to be operating the pool itself?
Yeah, so the lifeguarding typical pattern is based on the space, so rotating through the space, which really isn't diminished, because they need to see the spaces, which would be two on deck as a minimum, and typically, there's one off deck to deal with any emergencies that come up. And they're also dealing with other things like cleaning and rotating through different spaces like that. So it's typically three. That's what this model is based on for Aldergrove, for example. It's a little bit more at Walloch Grove than we did the model.
So we'd have three, three lifeguards. What about facility staff?
Yeah, so we would have, for example, for Aldergrove at the ticket booth, fortunately, there's a barrier there already, and there would be ticket selling staff at the front as well.
And how many, how many staff do we need? Can we get away with one person?
Yeah, typically, you know, when we're packed at twelve hundred, it's, there's, there's two staff in the ticket booth and three at the front desk, and you're rolling through that. But with forty limit, it would be a lot less. It would be one staff at the ticket booth. But you would have an extra host dealing with making sure that people are distancing as they're lining up to come in. And then people that were coming in, coming and going are following the proper egress routes.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is we need to have five staff each day?
Minimum per eight hour.
Per eight hours. Well, are we going to be opening this pool for more than eight hours?
The, with the models, right, like that alternate stage three, if you consider it in that, it's based on stage three reopening. It's based on an eight-hour day. So if you want to extend it beyond that, the thought with the hours was that you could alternate, you know, either three mornings or three evenings and have it split up that way.
Okay, so we've got an eight-hour day, and this $205,000 is going to cover these five staff members for four months?
For September to December, yeah.
From September to December, okay.
There's also additional cleaning costs that have been included, and also staff training costs for return to work. So that's been included as well.
Okay. Now, is there a need to adjust our fees? Either the entry fee or the fee that we charge the swimming clubs to try to recoup some of these costs?
Yeah, so the rentals piece, typically, we provide the lifeguard unless it's outside of our operating hours, in which case they would pay for the cost of the lifeguard. And it was referenced in the report, this is a bit of a unique situation, because we're not open. So that means we're covering the cost, or they cover the full cost of the lifeguard. So and the alternate option, as Mr. Bakken has said, would be that we would, you know, allow for a variance of some kind temporarily with their trained staff. And that's not something that we have explored any further than, you know, as one option. I think our preferred model would be to staff the most times and ensure safety during those times.
Okay. And is the intent to have public swimming as well as the swimming clubs? So the general public will have an opportunity to get in and use that pool every day as well?
With the $205,000, I think it was, that would be for public swim.
Yeah.
For the additional $47,000, $48,000, that's for rental groups. And so approximately four hours, four to five hours a day for rental groups. So it would vary either in the morning or afternoon, alternating with the public swim times. And we would schedule accordingly.
Okay, so the two hundred and five is for public swim, and there's an additional forty-eight then for the private clubs? So can we require those private clubs to pay?
They, they already do.
They already do?
They rent, yeah. As I understand, they pay a rental fee for their use of the pool. And so there, as it says in the report, there's a shortfall of forty-eight, but it's also, we have an increase in the ice rinks, which is helping subsidize that. So we're next for six, and now we're adding to add the public. We don't pay a rental per se as a group. We have to pay individual, and then we subsidize that.
Okay. And then one last question. So does this alternate stage three, will that include some of the baseball fields or the soccer fields opening as well, or is that not going to be included?
So this, this report is just dealing with primarily the recreation facilities, not the parks facilities portion? So, yeah, that would have been considered stage two when we opened back in June for initial, you know, initial openings of parks. And this, it's kind of being extended now with whether or not they're allowed competition. So that's for, I think, other consideration outside of maybe what we're presenting here.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councillor Ferguson?
Well, that was sure and interesting. That was the whole report there. That's good. We're getting all sorts of information here. I guess my, my question to staff would be, we now have a motion on table from councillor Long moved and seconded. Is there such a thing as a hybrid to that, given the cost? Or it's basically, it's what councillor Richter had indicated, $200,000 and some change, if I may, through a chair?
I think a hybrid for my discussions with Mr. Bakken, it's difficult. Once you open the facility, open the facility, so you're giving people hours work, you're kind of limiting it already. It already is a hybrid to full open. So we could debate adding or subtracting all day long, but we have to come up to some point. So I think staff are kind of have to say, okay, this is something we could do now, and we may be able to expand on it later. And we don't know what happens with the pandemic, we may have to contract on it. But I think this is a good start for today, and certainly gets the pool open for the public. But another hybrid, well, we have to tell staff, okay, we only want four hours a day.
No, that's fine, that's fine. I just wanted to double check on to make sure their work's following, you know, as much as you can. Okay, thank you.
They've done a lot of work in trying to come up with something that would be reasonable and as efficient as possible based on, you know, just opening up a facility such as Aldergrove. Okay, I'm going to call the question on that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here's unanimously. Then moving on to the Uh, then moving on to the fields and it's a good question, I sort of raised regarding field uses now, uh. Staff have already been allowing sports organizations to practice on the field, so they're already open. And there already is a process in place for for them to uh, book and manage fields. The big question is is uh, whether they can play organized games and that's what we've been hearing a lot of. Mr. Winsley has um, mentioned that EA Sport is updating their guidelines. And they expect to hear something very soon, and it's, I agree with him, it's good to. To uh, wait for those guidelines and not jumping the gun. Uh, but I really would like to uh, uh, I'll put a motion on the floor just to uh, speak to, speak to that and. And uh, that. You know, that basically we uh, we support staff and the ELC and what they're what they're already doing. So my motion would be to move that council endorsed staff to work through the township allowing emergency operations center. To continue to work with provincial ELC, provincial health bodies. EA Sport, provincial sport bodies. Township allowing sport organizations and leagues to accompany the comedy youth sport and. Gameplay as soon as practical. I think I have another version of that, but the wrong one, very similar. So make sure it's the same, move that council, endorse staff, continue to work through the T O L E O C with provincial organizations and bodies. EA Sport, provincial sport organizations and leagues. To accommodate youth sport and gameplay as soon as practical.
I'll second that.
Second, I, is that Counselor Richter? Uh, Counselor Richter seconded?
Yes, that was me.
Thank you, and uh, discussion, Counselor Davis?
Now, does that include field sports?
Includes all sports.
Includes all sports, so that's soft, that's uh, softball. The girls, uh, the. So we don't lose girl players.
All sport bodies.
Yeah, all sports bodies. A- as long as. As long as they follow all their procedures.
That's right, that's where we leave it to our ELC.
Okay.
Counselor Whitmarsh?
Thank you, I uh, support this uh, motion, glad you put it on the table, um. We should be doing whatever we can to move forward, uh, following the guidelines that are given to us by all the different authorities, so. Great motion, I'm supportive of it.
So you know, for the discussion, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Here's unanimously. In fact. Deals with F twelve, uh, thank you very much, great discussion and the staff have done a lot of work, they continue to work, uh, to accommodate everyone. And I know that was my decision, I'd love to open everything, but I know that it's not practical, so. We all have to work through this difficult time. Work, work together. Now, we're gonna go on to.
Just to clarify in case case parties are listening, I think the direction of the interpretation of that is. It's not to open tomorrow, it's status quo, it's to open as soon as practical.
As soon as practical.
With hearing from EA Sport and the other organizations, so that may be. Matter of hours, maybe a matter of days, so it depends when they get back to us, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah, we're waiting for the further guidelines, so. So uh, I think council's given that direction to staff to continue to work with them to get that, as soon as they get those guidelines. To uh, accommodate, that's really what we want to see. But uh, we're waiting for that. Right, so bylaws first and second reading, G one. Official community plan amendment to rezoning application number one zero zero one nine four and development permit application number one zero one one six four, essence holdings, uh, bylaw five six three two and five six three three, have a motion please? Counselor Whitmarsh and seconded? Counselor Kuntz, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed?
I'm opposed, Richter.
Counselor Richter and Counselor Arnison opposed, motion carries. Okay, and we move on to uh, G two. Rezoning application number one zero zero six zero one and development permit application number one zero one one five one. As one nine seven zero eight eighty six avenues at Langley Holden's Court. Bylaw five six two eight. Have a motion please.
Still move, Ferguson.
Counselor Ferguson moves and the seconded. Counselor Davis, any discussion?
Yes. Uh, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna put my hand.
Oh, there you are, Counselor.
Yeah. Now, isn't this the fellow who did the application or the the?
Yes.
Okay, but this is going forward with all the fees anyway, right?
That's, that's correct, so uh, the request of the delegation was to waive the CACs, uh, certainly council has that opportunity. At uh, third reading, they wish to do that, uh, or or not, but this would just move it forward. Uh, and uh, in this motion, there is no. Waiver, waiving.
There's no waiver, okay, thank you very much for that clarification.
All those in favor? Opposed? Here's. We want to G three, this is rezoning application number one zero zero five seven nine, development permit application number one zero one 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 three, Polyco York Center. Uh, bylaw five six one two. And the motion, uh, was in front of council, um, meeting's back. Has come back, uh, with uh, some amendments, so the motion says that council received the submission provided by the applicant and should council consider, so. Uh, it would be to endorse the proposed amendments. Or not to endorse, so if I can have a motion.
I'll move it.
To endorse the amendments, Counselor Whitmarsh moves, Counselor Davis seconds. Uh, Counselor Richter?
Um, yeah, I noted on page three that uh. Staff are not supporting the parking variance and I'm just wondering why.
Start Safi.
Uh. Your worship, thank you for the opportunity, there are a number of factors that have gone into staff's consideration of this application and the variance request. Uh. As you will have noted. One of the things that staff did ask for was the rationalization as to the support of the variance as to the basis, I guess I should say, of the variance request. Uh, the information that was provided was was not, I guess, uh, substantive to the point of of. Persuading staff to. Uh, support this, uh, it was provided on the basis of of sharing arrangement with, I guess, the other users on the property. And staff note that that is something that has been. I guess experienced in other similar situations where she, uh, parking has been shared with other users. That in fact, it does not result in a reduction of parking demand. So that was primarily the reason for the 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 lack of support from staff, but it's being presented for council consideration anyway.
Thank you, so does that mean that um? We we could remove the parking variance from this, or does this have to go forward now with the parking variance?
Your worship, the way it's presented right now to council. Uh, and and has been moved, uh, by 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 a member of council, by the mover and and seconded to go forward. It would assume that the variance is actually being supported, so. The variance is included in the development permit and the rezoning process going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Counselor Whitmarsh?
Uh, yeah, thank you, um, so this one came to us a while ago and uh, we. Refer to it back, referred the uh, the proponent back to meet with staff to come up with some other uh. Ways to look at this property, we talked, uh, um, there was a number of lots of discussion. And what they've done is come back with a second, uh. One building with a second floor, um, proposing a a daycare. Here, which, um, you know, I I think is a good thing, particularly in light of some of the discussion that we're still to have. Um, I think, uh, and we've already had about daycare spaces. Um, so I think this is a good thing and we need that in our community, it helps our community a lot, particularly a community like Willoughby, so. Um, I'm I'm supportive of what they've done for the changes and I'm supportive of sending it to public hearing and to let the public. Uh, provide some input on to what they think about this project, I think they've made. Uh, some adjustments and uh, enough for me that that I would want to see this to go to public hearing.
Uh, Counselor Arnison?
Yes, thank you, worship, um, I know that this was something that was. Uh, sent back for substantive work, I would say, to with the proponent and staff and so coming back with something that. Is. You know, uh, i- it's a very subjective term, I find mixed use, I know that there's probably. A a definition of it somewhere that indicates what exactly that looks like, but my analysis is is kind of a range. And so, um, further to Counselor Whitmarsh's comments, I think. Uh, from my perspective, um, this is a needed amenity in that area. As was pointed out in the report, there's a huge amount of townhomes in that area and so I think there's a growing need for daycare. Spaces there, but I did have a question, I guess, to Mr. Safi about um, the parking variance, so. As I recall, I could be wrong, but it was twelve spaces that staff felt, um, should be included. And staff didn't therefore support the the variance, is that correct?
Sorry.
Thank you, worship, I'm just sharing the uh, the screen, uh, so that council can take a look at the uh. The proposal that's in front of council, uh, the parking spaces required versus the parking spaces. Being provided. Uh. And the various components of the use, the proposed uses on site. That would then based on the zoning bylaw would drive the actual number that's being. That's being generated, so total number of parking stalls required is a hundred and thirty two. And total number of parking spaces being provided is a hundred and eighteen. Uh, and. This, I guess, provides another summary. Of the comparison. Uh, in terms of the original proposal and the revised proposal. With respect to not just the parking, but also in terms of. The uh, the number of buildings and the height of those buildings. As far as the number of stories are concerned and the overall square footage, uh, of of the floor areas.
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Safi, that's helpful, I I did have a question then regarding that because it seems to me. That the original application, they did meet the parking requirements. But as a result of us sending it back and asking for more density, this is where uh, the the challenge or or their deficit came in, is that correct?
That's correct, your worship, yeah.
Okay, um, and I guess what I want to point out in some way, and this is not in any way dismissive of a staff's response to this because. I'm sure that their due diligence indicated that there had been instances. Where other shared parking or applications where there was a deficit of parking led to. I'm sure challenges of parking in other places where there shouldn't have been parking, maybe in residential areas. But I would point out to council, there has been a lot of discussion recently about people walking. To facilities and so I assume that there could be an argument to be made here that. Because so many people will live in close proximity, I'm not saying nobody will drive there. But to me, it's a fairly compelling argument that this actually encourages people to walk or bike or do something. Other than to bring their car to this area, so. I just put that forward as um, a counterbalance to the idea that. Necessarily, this deficit of the parking spots is all that problematic, if that's the direction we're hoping to head for in any event. Thank you.
Davis?
Thank you very much, um. I think that if we want to make a walkable community, we're gonna take all the parking spots out because, um. You, you're, uh, Counselor Ferguson said a long time ago that uh. If you want to go in that direction, we gotta stop putting parking lots in anything. Uh, get rid of the cars and I think that right now, I don't know if that 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 will work. Um, I think one of the, I think there's a drop off stall. And uh, a drop off, and I don't know if it's included in that uh. Parking, but I I think it's been sent back, I'm gonna support this to public hearing. I think it's time to listen to what the public wants about it, uh. I think that um, development fits in. Uh, with the current neighborhood plans, the O C P. Um, I think that uh. The child, the com- it complements parents' desire to have their childcare in their neighborhood and um. I'm going to uh, support it to public hearing, thank you very much.
Counselor Whitmore?
Yeah, so thanks, so it seems like council's changed his mind on this one, so I'll certainly uh. See some defeat on this one, um. You know, it's news to me that somehow a giant parking lot motivates people to walk to these amenities, I mean, that's a, that's certainly a new one, I'll. Have to figure out where that comes from. I think for this one, I wanted to highlight to council's attention to page fifteen of the report. People could just humor me a little bit, maybe bring that up. That's uh, page fifteen of the G three Polico report. And zoom in a bit on the southwest view. Along Eightieth Avenue. Um. If this is an acceptable development. For Willoughby, then I have no idea what we're doing here, um. You can't claim to be in favor of walkable communities. Uh, can't claim to be concerned about climate change, you can't claim to be concerned about affordability of housing and vote for this development. Those three principles are incompatible with voting for development like this. On page fifteen, southwest view, along one of our major arterial roads. We're gonna be placing a gigantic parking lot and single story structures. It it is straight out of the nineteen eighties and it's an embarrassment. Um, so I think I've made my position on this pretty clear, um, it's a gigantic parking lot and what we're claiming to be a residential area. And and it's awful, thanks.
Right, thank you. Sure, I'm on, yeah, thank you for that, uh, so now I'll call the questions, signal to the discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
And Counselor, Counselor Whitmore and Counselor Richter are opposed, motion carries. We move on to. Okay, so. G four and G five are to do cannabis retail sales endorsements, now, uh, one thing I'm concerned about. Some discussions is that. Um, we are now starting to receive these as rezonings, however, we have agreed that there will be, uh. Like one. Retail establishment in each community, I think the total is seven. Mr. Back? Who's lost in audio? So, um. So there are other applications that are already being uh, brought forward to the township. And I think prior to us looking at moving these forward, we should perhaps have a motion to set a date, perhaps today. Where applications uh, that are received today be uh. Gathered together to be brought before councils, uh, for council's consideration with a selection criteria. In place, uh, Mr. Back, perhaps uh, elaborate on what staff would be looking for from council. We're gonna get these as one offs and, you know, it's just because this one was a day before the next one, it's perhaps not fair to start, uh.
So, Mr. Mayor, if you're making that a motion, I'll second it.
Sure, I'll I'll do that, I'll just wanna hear Mr. Back, I'll clarify with the motion.
Uh, thank you, worship, just to summarize very briefly. The process we have is a sound process for rezonings. Um, but it does add complications to it when we have to select among various parties. Or if you will, select one rezoning amongst another. Um. The challenge we face is, I think last I counted, there was something like eighteen applications in the system, there may be more. And the challenge we face is, well, if we were to pass these applications today. The result would be they would be the preferred applications and would effectively block other applications for the area they represent. So our our cho- our choice then is to proceed on that basis and uh. Make some decisions without knowing what else is in the system or to slow the process down unfortunately a little bit. And actually try to bring forward the applications en masse. Uh, so really we go from being an issue of rezoning to being an issue of, uh, uh, I guess, selection. And to do so, there's two thresholds we have to pass, the first threshold is, well. What about the number of applications, what if more come in later? What if one of the applications already submitted drags on for an inordinate amount of time? Uh, perhaps as a mechanism or someone doesn't submit their materials such as a perhaps as a mechanism to impact the marketplace. Uh, what can we do about that, well? One thought would be that as to the timing issue, we set an artificial deadline that say the council will consider all applications. Received by August the first that proceed in an orderly and businesslike fashion, uh, together. Uh, and we would report back if there was any applications that were not proceeding. In an orderly and businesslike fashion, so council could perhaps decide to pin the pool somewhere. The second decision then is, once we have that pool of applications, it's for council to determine how they wish to select among them. Now inherently, that that issue is gonna be something each council member will have to decide on their own, is that's going to be uh. A situation where their discretion cannot be fettered, they must make their decisions in an unfettered way. However, we can then suggest some guidelines or processes, uh, perhaps some selection criteria that they could consider. They wouldn't be binding per se, but they may actually help the council members look at the applications from various perspectives. So the combined effect of these for these two applications would be. Uh, A, to make the decision of a deadline and B, to uh, make the decision as to selection criteria. Both of which could be referred to staff so they could come back, uh, as as uh, soon as practical. Uh, with a bit of a timeline and a bit of a uh, response to that going forward.
Thank you. So I would make that motion to now the date, August 1st. Mr. Back, there's several in place. You feel that's a date at this point?
That could be subject to council discussion, or it could be referred to staff to bring back the date once we've had a chance to look at the fullness of other applications.
If we didn't follow, you'd bring up a practice date. So perhaps.
How about miss, how about September 1st?
Yeah. We, we meet in, yeah, September 1st, I think it's a month.
Because we're not meeting again until September anyway.
14, that's right. Okay, so I'd move that.
I'll second it.
Furthest, the date is September 1st, bring back the approved applications and the selection criteria for council's consideration. I moved the second by Council Richter. Discussion, Council Long?
Yeah, thanks for helping to clarify this because I am quite confused, or challenged on how we actually go about this. I mean, you've got one application that's only two days difference, right? One was put in, the one we're talking about, at least in, in this one, and G4 was brought in on April the 22nd, the other one's April 24th. You know, I'm just wondering if we're going to have people say, well, gee, I actually dropped it in the door earlier and, you know, it fell under the rug or something like that. So what you're saying in this motion, your worship, is that there'll be some selection criteria on, in this particular case, on G4, these three that'll be fours, plus whatever other ones may come in by September 1st? I guess it'll be tablated of some kind and then?
Yes, sorry, expect. So staff would come back with the applications received up until September the 1st. It'll be including these two and the other ones that are in the works, and then their status, so that we could have some discussion around that. And then also to assist council with the selection criteria. You know, we have the basic one, so many meters away for daycare, schools, that sort of thing.
Okay. Now, just another question on, on the page nine, it says parking in the right slot, and it has to be determined, but then there's a number, P R O V 82 to 42683. Can staff explain where that is? It's on page nine of G4. Because that's a bit, that's a bit of a chart already on this, on the D4 one, right? And another question while he's looking that up, your worship, are you, your motion is covering G4 and G5?
Yes, yeah, let's move both G4 and G5. Thank you.
Yeah, so what does that mean on that chart?
So let's wait for Mr. Back to catch up on it.
Your worship, did you want me to respond?
Yes, please.
Yeah, what does that mean?
Page, what page are we looking at?
Page nine.
Be fine. Okay, thank you.
Well, it's in both reports, on page 10 of the G5, on page something else. It has a chart that has the date.
Yes. One, one of the challenges that, that staff have, your worship, is what may be considered by applicants as, as not necessarily processing applications in a timely manner. So these applications have been brought forward based on council's policy as they have been ready in terms of the process that we follow with applications for development or any other permit that is presented to us. So as they go through the process, which includes internal and external referrals to agencies such as RCMP, and once we get the comments back, then staff prepare the report and present them to council. In this particular case, when the policy was adopted, the same discussion did occur, and staff did advise council that when the applications are ready on their own specific circumstances and based on their own individual merits, they will be brought forward for council to consider. At the same time, staff will provide council with information as to what other applications may be in the same area for council to consider, such that the information or the council decision is not being made in isolation of other information. So with that in mind, staff is, is providing council with the full information in terms of applications that have been presented and in the process of being processed by staff in that particular area. So the page nine of G4, for example, the one that Council Long is referring to, is providing council with information about the subject application, which is CR 000002, as well as the other applications. That gives you an indication of the number of applications that staff are actually processing. So the subject application is number two, and then the other ones are six and 15 that are in the same area. And a table provides council with information in terms of how they actually fit the criteria within the policy. So are they in the commercial core? Yes, all three of them are. When were they actually received? Well, the dates are there for council to see. And then are they near any other sensitive uses, such as parks or schools? The proximity is shown on the other column, the one but last. And then finally, how are they able to comply with the parking requirements? And the first one, that being the subject, subject application, G4, the TBD should actually be replaced in terms of the required by the number 62. Because when you look at the body of the report, there's actually 62 that's being required and 82 being provided. However, the other ones are still under review in terms of the parking requirements and the parking provisions or provide, the parking requirements being provided by each one of the other applications in the, in the area.
So that's the number of parking, one of them's going to have 426 parking spots?
62 being required, yes. Remember, these are, these are requirements of the, I guess, the entire mall that they're in. So it's not just, just that particular use. It is the entirety of.
Last amount of parking that's available.
Being shared. That's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Council Whitmarsh. Okay, pretty passive. Okay, Council Kuntz.
Yeah, hi. So one of my questions would be, will we likely have all applications in by September for all the sites? Or will we, so that we can make a decision on, on, on everything? Or will more come in after September? Do we still, you know, does that give everyone enough time?
So just to clarify two things, your worship, as we're talking about bundling them and bringing them forward, of course, it would be by the segmented areas because it would be a more logical way to actually break them up. The second piece, though, is what do we expect by September? Well, what we're really saying is that if someone made an application August 30th, we would have to process that application in that area and bring them back. So we're not talking about a quick decision here. We're talking about really just allowing those that are, that may be in the process of making an application to submit their application. That would be completed applications by September the 1st. So this would take still several months to go on before we get to any resolution of decisions.
Is any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Okay, so I took care of G4 and G5. Move to bylaws first, second, and third reading. H1 is highly closure, dedication, removal, and exchange. Bylaw 5610, could I have a motion, please?
Slow move, Ferguson.
Council Ferguson moves. Council Kuntz seconds. Discussion. Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor? Opposed? Awaiting unanimously. Want the bylaws for first, second, third, and final adoption. Referral to 2020 tax sale to 2021, bylaw 5629. On the COVID, Council Davis moves it. Council Long seconds. Discussion. Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries. Bylaws for consideration of third reading. J1 is rezoning application number 100581 and development permit application number 101118 by architecture, bylaw 5622. Could I have a motion, please? Council Davis moves, seconder.
Ferguson second.
Council Ferguson, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question on J1. All those in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
Council, opposed, the motion carries. Move on to bylaws for consideration of third and final adoption. This is official community plan amendment and rezoning application number 100184, bylaw number 5526, 5527. Have a motion, please?
We'll move.
Council Davis, seconder, was?
Move, second.
Council Long, discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question.
Wait, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Your counsel.
Yeah, I did have a question here.
Okay, Council Richter, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm wondering, this is K1 that we're on now, right?
Yes.
Okay, so half the properties have dropped out. How can this still be valid bylaw if half the properties have dropped out?
Ask God, Mr. Safi, respond.
Your worship, the number of properties does not affect the validity of the bylaw. It could actually be just even one property. It's, it's just like any other rezoning application. It's just that more of the property owners were taking advantage of the provision that council had put in the community plan previously. And for reasons that are presumably to do with economics, some have dropped out. So it doesn't affect the validity of the bylaw.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, no further discussions. So I will call a question. All those in favor, K1? Opposed? Carries unanimously. We want the bylaws for final adoption. Rezoning application number 100131, Sandville Homes Limited, and bylaw number 5379. Could I have a motion, please?
Go move, Ferguson.
Second by Council Ferguson. Whitmarsh and Ferguson, discussion. Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
Council Richter opposed. Carries unanimously. But carries, Council opposed. We go on.
We oppose, sorry.
Oh, Council Davis opposed. Okay, so Council Richter and Council Davis opposed. And now we move to L2. It's official community plan amendment. Rezoning application number 100160 and development permit application numbers 10971, 101091, 101092, Mitchell Latimer, bylaw 5491, 5492. Have a motion on the two bylaws, please?
Move.
Davis moves, seconder. Council Kuntz, discussion. All the question, all those in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
Council Richter opposed, the bylaws carry. And move on to the development permit applications, which are three of them. Have a motion on all three. Davis moves, Council Kuntz seconds. Discussion. Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
Council Richter opposed, carry. We want to L3. Official community plan amendment and rezoning application number 100187. This is Oak Brook, Brook Foundation, bylaw 5486, 5487. Have a motion, please?
Done it. Is this four?
L3.
Yeah, all three. Okay, sorry.
Okay, motion, sorry, I missed who moved. Council Long moves, Council Kuntz seconds. Discussion, Council Richter.
Yes, I just wanted to check with staff through you, Mr. Mayor. So they are going to hook up to municipal water when that municipal water is available?
That's correct, your worship.
Okay, and we do have a covenant on that about it?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Council Long?
Yeah, and in, on that issue, any timeline expected and when, when water will be available there? Or is that, staff have any idea when that could happen?
Sorry, your worship, the quick answer is no, because it's, we don't have any plans. There are no municipal plans. It's a question of how quickly the property owners in the area might be motivated to actually start a, a process for a local service.
Okay, seeing no further discussions, I'll call the question on L3. All those in favor? And opposed? Carries unanimously. L4, rezoning application number 100537, Dembo Transport Limited, bylaw 5503. Have a motion, please?
We'll move.
Council Davis, seconder. Council Kuntz. Council Davis, discussion.
This is for parking trucks that are related to this facility, correct? That's a question through staff. I think it is.
Yes, your worship, yeah.
Oil-based products for Dembo. Yep, thank you.
Yes, seeing no further discussion, I'll call a question. All those in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
Council Woodruff opposed, the motion carries. Correspondents, there's a piece of correspondence.
Ferguson, move your seat.
Move your seat. Council Ferguson, second. Council Long, discussion. Seeing none, call a question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Minutes of committees, the council process committee of July 20th. We have a motion to adopt the minutes. Council Davis, second by Council Long, and there are some missions. Seeing none, call a question. All those in favor? Opposed and carries. Right, the mayor and council report. I think there's a couple of slides to put up there. There we go. Right, good evening, everyone. Certainly interesting meetings, as we sit inside our Zoom cocoons, but welcome everyone to our, our meeting. Last week, I had the opportunity to visit one of our many local growers, Charlie, who runs a blueberry farm in Alda Grove, on 16th Avenue and 264th Street. It's a great time of year in the township, which has an abundance of businesses that grow and produce everything from fresh fruit, berries, and veggies, to wine, beer, cheese, meat, and baked goods. There's so much to enjoy in our backyard. We encourage everyone to support our local businesses and eat local and buy local this summer. I really enjoyed visiting Charlie's, hired all the neighbor kids and his own children who are operating the sales of their blueberries right off the farm. Really great to visit with them. I had the pleasure of presenting this year's John and Muriel Arneson Award to Carol Paulson and Dave Malachuk, founding directors of the Langley Sustainable Agriculture Foundation, who've been helping to ensure farmers and food production thrive into the future since the volunteer-run organizations created in 2011. And so it's certainly a different volunteer appreciation year where we didn't have the banquet, but it's really encouraged that we could come out and do a nice presentation to them and provide them with the photos. As well, the Pete Sorenson Outstanding Community Youth Award was presented to Prabhasa, what's that one? Rikama Chachi of Alda Grove Secondary School, who has an average grade of 97% in her studies, is a top track and field athlete and is an active volunteer who founded Operation SHE, S A G, Safety, Health, and Education, an organization which purchases supplies for girls' orphanage in Sri Lanka. Outstanding young woman, and she has a track and field scholarship, I believe, to the University of Ohio. Hopefully, she can get there with this, this COVID. But outstanding young person and well deserving of the award. So tomorrow, our top volunteer of the year will be recognized when the Eric Flowerloo Volunteer Award is presented to Nigel Easton. Easton was manager of the Langley Curling Center and helped bring several high-profile events to the Langley Township, including the 2020 New Holland Canadian Junior Curling Championships, as worked to make sports accessible to everyone. He's also active with the Nicco Meco Enhancement Society. Congratulations to Nigel. I'd like to congratulate all the series recipients and thank you to the many wonderful volunteers who go above and beyond to make the township of Langley an exceptional community. I know the theme when you talk to the recipients of these awards is always the same. They say, you know, I'm just one of many volunteers. And I always remind them, they represent all the great volunteers that we have. And we certainly appreciate all the volunteers who do so much to make Langley such a great place to live. So I want to wish everyone a healthy and safe summer. This is our last council meeting prior to the summer break. We will be convened, I think, September 14th. But I want to wish everyone a great summer. It's vacationing local, staying safe, enjoying what we have right in our own backyard. So with that, we'll move back to the meeting. I have, Council Richter has something to add. Council Richter?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. There has been quite a few inquiries this past week concerning the mosquitoes in Fort Langley, as I'm sure you're probably aware.
Oh, yes.
But the mosquitoes are under the jurisdiction of Metro Parks. And I did get in touch with them, and they said that the environmental conditions this year have created ideal mosquito habitat. The Fraser River flood levels peaked three times during the fresh air. I wasn't aware that it was three, three times. And this has basically resulted in the issues that we're dealing with. People who have concerns about mosquitoes, the township does have a hotline, and that hotline is 604-432-6228. And township is a little And township is a little different from other municipalities in Metro because we also provide in some situations control efforts on private properties, not just public properties. So again, uh, for those people who are interested or have concerns or questions about mosquitoes, call the township six oh four four three two six two two eight. Thanks.
Thank you very much for that. I noticed the mosquitoes are starting to diminish now, so we're over the peak. Not only the river, but also the mosquitoes. Hopefully we don't have another lapse of them, but I know there's fear of them out there. Certainly was a bad year. I know I lived down there. And you're right, the river just didn't want to go down this year. Went down a little bit, it came back up again, so I think we're over it now and it's the end of the fresh air.
Yeah.
mosquito season, so.
Well, hopefully we'll see the end of it before the end of summer, anyway.
That's right, that's right. Although there's some good products if you can buy them, they're sold out. I was sitting on the deck and it's a great product that created a mosquito repellent smoke and sat out there all night, but try and replenish that. Now, they're resold out, so. Alright, we'll move on to items from prior meeting and R one, there's a delegation from Richard and Stephanie Heather. Uh, this is that three will be deferred, so there was a motion to remove a tree that is possibly a public land with stratospheric property. Uh, that's causing some problems, so there's a motion, um, the council regarding this. The staff needs some traction. Counselor Davis? Uh, do you wish to move? If you just explain, you wish to move to have the tree removed?
Oh, no, sorry. Okay, I thought you were, uh, no, 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 sorry.
Uh, maybe Mr. Backen, uh, he's provided some assistance for council, what staff are we looking for in orders. There was a delegation, so a decision to make is either that we go and remove the tree with proper notification uh, of the, uh, services, I have it. Sir Backen?
Your worship, just to recap, this was a result response to the delegation of last meeting. Uh, the issue was the willow tree. Um, the delegates asked that it be removed. Staff has applied a memo. Effectively, we, uh, are we have no objections to removing the tree. In fact, we're prepared to proceed to remove the tree, provided it's on the appropriate notice, uh, and clarification to the resident that this is not deemed to be in any way an admission of liability. This is more of a good neighbor approach trying to deal with some other issues. Um, and if that's the direction of council, then a motion would be in order.
Okay, then you know what, I'm I'm gonna move that.
Alright, I was ready. Counselor Davis moves it and Counselor Whitmarsh seconds it. Uh, so discussion, Counselor Richter?
Um, yes, I just wanted, as much as I hate to see trees come down, uh, some trees are problematic. And we have, I think, a responsibility to, uh, to deal with trees on our properties that are problematic. Uh, I just want to make sure that, um, when and this tree comes down, that the stump and as much of the root system will also be removed as well.
Yes, staff, you are best.
So they're they're gonna take the stump out and as much of the root, uh, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Whitmarsh?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to, uh, uh, get a sense from staff of the timing of this, uh, wanting to have this done, I think, as soon as possible, particularly before we get into rain season again in the fall and have some of the same issues. So I'm wondering what the timing, um, would be. Is this something that could be done over the next, you know, thirty days or something?
Mr. Sack?
Uh, yes, your worship, it can be done within the next thirty days.
Thank you.
Counselor Long?
Yeah, I'm sorry to say, I'm I'm not really gonna support it. I I hope that the folks realize that this is not gonna solve their problem because the roots uh, that are going through the pipe, uh, could come from any tree, first of all, so I don't think the poor willow is totally to blame. But it seems to me from the report that I can ascertain is that the pipe should be replaced, and I'd much rather find a way to contribute perhaps towards that or or do something. To me, that be moving the tree is a real shame. The tree is very healthy, but, uh, from my understanding, it's not gonna solve the problem. You need to put new pipes in there. And it's a shame that that didn't happen in the beginning. I think that perhaps the contractor, whoever built the the house should have looked into that. So I won't be supporting removing such a nice tree. Thank you.
Counselor Arneson?
Yes, thank you, worship. Um, through you to staff, I know that there's been discussion about, uh, the stump and also the roots. Um, some research indicates that the potential is that Roundup or some other really, uh, toxic material will have to be used in order to destroy the root and the stalk of the tree. Is there something that could be recommended as an alternative? Um, because I think that's not something that we would wish to do, particularly because it's near Five Corners in that area. Some might know there's an Artesian well there that many people come and get their water from, so I I would be very reluctant to be putting that kind of material into the ground in that area.
Sack, any comments on that?
Thank you, worship. I didn't hear anything in in terms of council direction or or specific comments from members of council as far as, I guess, the methodology to be used for removal of as much of the root structure as possible was the direction that I heard, so staff will not be, uh, staff or a contractor potentially being engaged by staff will will just, I guess, try and and remove as much of the root structure as possible with with due attention to the environment.
Uh, thank you for that. In in fact, then, that changes my mind about removing it. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Whitmarsh?
No, I just wanted to have the motion read back, Mr. Mayor, to understand exactly what the parameters are.
I see no further discussion. Ms. Barak, do the motion back, please.
Uh, the motion is quite simply that council directs staff to have that tree removed.
Uh, your worship, with the appropriate communication that the removal does not indicate any admission or, uh, any mission of liability.
Yeah, I mean, that's that's assumed, Mr. Mayor, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, see no further discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
Counselor Arneson opposed, and anybody else opposed?
Yeah, Long.
Counselor Long opposed, yeah. Thank you. The motion carries. Uh, we moved our business, Counselor Long, I think it, um, S one is now mute.
Uh, yes, uh, I'll withdraw that because we we, but I do have some other business when you're ready, your worship.
That's right, look into that. Um, S two, uh, is Counselor Whitrich, Counselor Whitrich here?
No, I don't need to read this, Mr. Mayor, I just can speak to it instead and just move the last paragraph.
What's second?
Moving second by Counselor Richter.
Uh, go ahead. So I think that to give this a little bit of context, uh, I think the wherethas is kind of speak for themselves and what the, but I can, and staff can, of course, address any questions that anyone has. Um, I just want to highlight for council's information that this is directed to review, consider, and report back to council. It's not doing anything. It's not making any decisions. It's providing some information to council to consider some options uh, to try to move the Smith Neighborhood Plan forward. Um, right now, we're we have, you know, we have two two paths to finishing two oh eight street, the two twelve connector and Seventy Second Avenue within the Smith Neighborhood Plan. And one of them is to, of course, borrow money, buy the land, build the road from the D C program. The other option is to try to move forward with development in the Smith Neighborhood Plan, which isn't occurring, and they're not mutually exclusive. I think we should at least, at the very least, look at at this option. We have some problems in the Smith Neighborhood Plan that it relugs to school site acquisition and drainage infrastructure. We're having problems where a lot of the lots are small, they're owned by lots of different people. And there's there has been a challenge to assemble enough properties for one person to move forward, one group to move forward with with any of these rather expensive requirements. So I'd like to look at some options to solve this particular problem, uh, given the desperate need for the road infrastructure within this neighborhood plan that is not moving forward with the the normal course of development on any known timeline. Thanks.
No further discussions, so I'll call the question.
Wait, 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 no, I'm there.
I don't see any hands up. I'll wait. Little blue hands. Okay, there we go. Counselor Long?
Uh, okay, uh, I mean, I see the word acquisition, so this is more money, more borrowing, more, uh, sort of playing developer. I think we really need to leave some of these plans alone and let them develop as they go as the, uh, as the market drives and, uh, I really, I I I really take objection to us constantly with the council very often saying, okay, we can solve this with, uh, by throwing some of taxpayers' money at an issue. Um, I'm not an expert in in, uh, development. I don't think anybody on council is either. So, uh, sometimes things are best left as they are, and we've done an awful lot of this in this last term, millions and millions of dollars trying to advance things. I'm not sure what the hurry is, uh, and and I'm really concerned about spending taxpayers' money. The other thing, your worship, I'm not sure why we don't read the motions. Uh, those that are watching should should be reading, hearing the motion, and it should be read into the agenda. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Uh, Counsel Ferguson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, we've got a motion on the table. It's been duly moved and seconded. I ju- I just wanted, if I may, through the chair to the staff, um, the Smith's plan that took a number of years to put into place, um, is there anything, and is there any reason why, uh, this, uh, in the motion says delay in advancement? Is there something delaying the advancement of the plan if I may through staff?
Sir Backen?
Uh, thank you, worship. I'll start off with Mr. Sack, he has a comment. He can perhaps add it in. The challenge in the Smith Neighborhood is it's relatively a small neighborhood plan with a lot of small parcels, a lot of partializations gone into play. That makes it very difficult to assemble the necessary size of the development that could then actually accommodate the or or, I guess, uh, arrange or or contribute the necessary park and school site to advance. So as we look at our neighborhood plans from Willoughby, most are underway, some significantly, but Smith has technically not yet started because of the impediment in place, so I think the request is of staff to go back and review, consider, and report to council whether there's a need for there to be uh, some intermediate steps taken as to development of the Smith Neighborhood.
Okay, just supplemental to that earlier on in the agenda, the 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 mayor's task force development management, uh, would this be an example of something that could be in a use as part of that, uh, process that we went through, if I may through the chair?
The mayor's task force did a significant amount of work as to the development application process. This is much more the development of the neighborhood plan, I think, so while there's a certain amount of overlap, I think this question is just a bit independent of our development processes. Uh, it it really, I think, helps us or guides us in terms of when we're looking at creating neighborhoods to make sure we understand the the nature of the parcels that exist in the area, uh, to ensure that, uh, there can be enough of a critical mass to accelerate that development to become a reality.
Okay, thank you. My last final comment is much, you know, I'll be supporting this. I don't say anything wrong with with reviewing and moving something forward, especially if it's for the benefit of the community. Uh, I'm not sure if it's something that is doable, but it's something, I guess, we can always look at to, uh, review the process, improve the process, and move forward for the benefit of the community. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Davis?
Thank you very much. First of all, um, I think I'm gonna support it because it's, um, uh, a review, consider, and report to council. It's not council's, uh, fault. Well, it's not council's, uh, responsibility to, uh, to make a certain area develop faster than others. But the key thing here, I believe, is along two oh eight and Seventy Second Avenue is badly needed for the entire Willoughby area, and I think that alone is worth the reporting. The reporting will cost us money. Somebody's gonna have to spend some time on it. But, um, I've, I also, I'm being cheeky. If you write the motion, I think you should have to read it. It just, and you know, I'm I'm.
I'll keep them shorter.
Make them shorter, yeah. But I'm gonna support it and I'm gonna support it because it's a, it's it's a, um, it's the recommendation that you come back and say, well, we think we can do this and that'll help us out. And the key is two oh eight and Seventy Second. Uh, thank you very much.
Uh, Counselor Whitrich?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just, uh, just can't let a couple of those comments go by. The typical misrepresentations, I'll try to clear these up. Uh, the word acquisition appears nowhere in the motion. Uh, there's no mention of using taxpayer money anywhere in the motion. Um, and it's potential coordination, uh, so coordination being the key. It's not the expectation that the township's necessarily gonna be doing the job of development. But in this case, in this particular neighborhood plan, for the purposes of this infrastructure, I think it is important that township examine the possibility of how to move this neighborhood plan forward, given the critical infrastructure that we need within it. Um, and so it's a bit curious to have the same, you know, the same individual opposing finishing two oh eight, but also opposing freeing up development to finish it for us, so. In the end, I think I'm just trying to be helpful here, trying to sol- solve some particular problems or at least look at it. And I want council to be aware that some of those statements are just just false. Thanks.
Quite fully, Mr. Your worship. Perhaps Counselor Woodward has a different agenda because it says right here, acquisition in the article being resolved. At least it does on my copy.
To re- reconsider report. So it's reporting back, so there is no acquisition. So I'm gonna call, I'm gonna, I think there's been enough discussion and we know where we are. I'm gonna call the question.
No, I've got my hand up.
I I'm gonna call the question. Uh, all those in favor?
Your worship, I.
Opposed, if you're folk, we don't need to.
You're not recognizing me?
Well, you've already spoken, it's pretty, what are you gonna, okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Counselor Long.
How can?
Question again.
How can the council to say that it doesn't say acquisition anywhere in his motion when it is in the motion? It says coordinate provision of necessary drainage infrastructure and school park acquisitions and for the advancement, so it is telling us to acquire stuff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Uh, who's opposed? Counselor Long?
I am opposed.
And who's also opposed? Okay, Counselor Long, so it's carries. Uh, Counselor Long, uh, there's some information, uh, Mr. Backen, uh, Counselor Long asked for some information on fire protection, top floor balconies, uh, maybe you can start, Counselor Long, maybe Mr. Backen just kind of fills in where we are with that. So we go, Counselor Long?
I can move to speak to him?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
You brought this.
Yeah, I mean, I, we have the memo from, uh, from Chief Gamble. Uh, I just think it's a real concern um, that we've had now, there was a second very serious fire. And it appears that, uh, this could be even more prevalent because even though the new stuff is being built with the proper sprinklers, there's a lot of buildings that don't have those sprinklers. And as things are changing, people don't smoke inside anymore, they go outside to smoke on the patio, and that's where these fires are starting, so uh, I don't see any recommendation, um, but I would, I would hope that we could get the word out and maybe this, I can do it here. Maybe staff can do it on a township page or something that folks really should have, and 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 the chief does say, you should have a fire extinguisher in your in your apartment, especially, well, in all your homes. But certainly, if you're on the top floor of an apartment on your patio, you ought to have a fire extinguisher because if something breaks out, and this is what I believe is the case in both of these serious ones. I'm a fact on that, but if a fire breaks out, what do you do? You turn around, you if I was stuck at the water, by the time you come back, the the whole place is aflame because you've got vinyl siding and and combustible items on there and there's no fire extinguisher. Please, let's get the word out before anybody's hurt or injured that. At minimum, you should have a a good fire extinguisher, probably by your patio door uh, and be, uh, make sure it's functional and certainly, fortunately, the the new apartments that are being built have the proper sprinklers, but maybe there's some other comments from other councillors. And maybe Mr. Backen can tell us, is there a way that we can get this information out? Is that something that council would be interested in doing? Is, um, telling people they better have one. I guess we can't make them have it, but boy, oh, boy, it sure is a cheap way, you know, inexpensive way to save a life and a and a building if you can put it out with a fire extinguisher.
Thank you. I'm Mr. Backen.
Uh, thank you, worship. Just for those listening in very briefly. This is, uh, caused by some of the recent fires in apartment buildings that have occurred. Traditionally, these are in somewhat older structures that, um, were not built in compliance with the current code. They were built in compliance with the code that existed at the time they were constructed. And now sprinklers are required in attics and in balconies, um, as we've seen a trend that sometimes fires develop in at and balconies, move the way the attics. Uh, I think the the heart of this is to recognize that the jurisdiction lies under the provincial building code with the province. Um, but we can certainly take a few steps to advertise the importance of fire extinguishers and fire prevention as fire departments, uh, certainly has the resources and wherewithal to do just that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Davis?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Counselor Richter?
Um, I have something for other business.
Okay. Counselor Long, yeah.
Can I, can I proceed with it?
I'll just see if, uh, is there any other discussion on this topic, I think, uh? I'll see if, uh, there's any other discussion on this topic. I think, uh, Mr. Backen, you know, we'll try and get the word out through the fire department, through the educational programs that they have. Okay, so that covers that off. So Council Richter, so this is time for other business. So Council Richter and then Council Wong, Council Richter for the business?
Yes, um, there are two items, uh, in items distributed that came in that I'm hoping staff will be able to provide us with an update on. Uh, first is a, in the items distributed on July twenty third, item number nine on page thirty one, an email from Nancy Clark with regards to a soil permit and, uh, and extensive trucks as a result of that permit. And also in the items distributed today, July twenty seventh, number twelve on page forty three, uh, uh, an email from Raina Grenier, who reports that a tree on her property was cut by township crews and she wants to know why, because the tree is on private property. And also that the trees were very poorly trimmed. They were, I think she used the word butchered. So I'm wondering if we could get a report on that as well. And then I've got two notices of motion. I sent them in earlier today by email to, uh, Ms. Bauer, the clerk. I just want to confirm that she got the two of them.
All right.
Yes, we have received both.
Okay, so I won't read them. Uh, seeing as how we're gonna have a nice little break in August. But one pertains to a beaver problem on Forty Third Avenue east of two seventy second street. The other one pertains to our procedure bylaw and substantive material, um, that we should be getting prior to our meetings so that we all have a time, enough time to read and digest it. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And Mr. Saffy, uh, can you respond to the two queries Council Richter had on the discussions?
Yes, thank you, your worship. On the soil deposit issue, your worship, certainly staff will look into it and, and provide council with additional information. But I just wanted to let council know, uh, as far as the other, the second issue that Council Richter raised is concerned, the tree cutting issue. Uh, I did get a chance to take a look at this issue and speak with staff. Uh, the, the tree is actually on public property. It is not on private property. And it was pruned based on our, our typical operating procedures and practices in order to make sure that there is public safety and there, there's appropriate and adequate site visibility for both pedestrians and, and, and vehicles. So this was just following normal procedures to ensure public safety and the, the tree is actually not on private property, but rather on, on public property. Uh, staff is in the process of drafting a response and will copy Council Wong.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, Council Wong?
Thanks, your worship. So at the last meeting, I believe, we had a memo on two sixteen, uh, in the interchange and, uh, a report from, from staff on the responding, I think, some of the concerns of a couple of the two citizens that rode in, or at least the two. And something that troubled me in there was about the signage. Now, there, there was discussion all the way through this project of putting signage on Highway one, eastbound and westbound advising that trucks should probably, you know, not use that exit if possible. And the report says, well, the province is working on those signs. They're in the shop and they won't be installed until sometime after the interchange opens. Now, this is, to me, it seems very odd. So I would like us to write to MOTI and tell them, get those signs up. They should get up before the interchange is open. Advisory signs that this is not where trucks should be going if possible. So I, I can't understand, uh, the rationale that they're in the sign shop and haven't got around to it. Um, and I'm not trying to be cheeky there, but don't you think, your worship, they should be put up sooner than later? And I'd like to make a motion that we write to them and tell them they should go up on opening day.
Mr. Saffy? Any comment?
Thank you, your worship. Yes, uh, staff has received additional information since the last information that had been received from the ministry that now provides clarification in that the, the signs have in fact been completed or manufactured and will be installed prior to opening of the interchange.
Well, there you go. That's wonderful. And the second item, and thank you. So that's the end of that. And I, I'm, I don't have a recommendation, but your worship, how are we going to deal with the delegation that came on the, uh, on the CAC? So I, I just thought I'd put that out there because I'm not sure if staff can explain if they uh, made this type of application with quite a bit of green space and low density and, and a different yield. And of course, we're trying to produce jobs and, and so I don't have an answer, but it is certainly a concern that we should all have is how we're going to deal with that. Maybe we just leave it.
It could be, I'll get more information. You don't want a third reading. So, your worship, make the minutes.
So should we refer this to staff then, delegation?
Uh, well, Mr. Backen?
Uh, your worship, I guess it depends, right? Right now, the matter that the delegation was speaking to has been, uh, has been processed and effectively adopted without the modifications delegate thought. If council, based on that, wants to review the bigger policy issue, I guess we could get into doing so. But remember, there's nothing that mandates the delegation be sent to staff. It's only if council truly wants additional information. And in this matter, at least for now, it appeared to be closed.
Okay, are we talking about the same item? We're talking about the CACs, right?
Yes, yeah, that went through first secondly.
Okay, but, but I'm just curious because you, you had asked the question of the delegate, uh, whether he would look at a reduction and he said he chose to.
I asked, yeah, I asked him if he considered it.
So now he doesn't get anything. He's gonna have to pay the full amount then.
Well, it's, it's a question that council would have to, um, um, consider. If we wished to do it for him, it'd be a one of, unique. It would be, uh, for certain criteria, uh, perhaps with the amount of amenities he's providing, which is maybe different from other, you know, other, um, applications. Similar to this, that that might be, maybe supported. So lots to consider. Mr. Saffy, Mr. Saffy stand up. I think he's got some insight onto this. Mr. Saffy?
Me, this is an.
Thank you, your worship. Sorry, I just wanted to provide a quick clarification, your worship. There's been reference to CACs a couple of times. Uh, I just wanted to clarify that CACs are not applicable, not applicable on this application because it's not a residential development. What the delegate requested was waiving or reduction of, actually, he clarified waiving of the Greenway amenity, uh, requirements, not the CACs, the Greenway amenity requirements, which amount to approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars based on the Greenway amenity contribution requirements of the bylaw that's in place for that area.
Okay, well, thank you for that.
Okay, is there any other business? See none, a motion to adjourn?
Adjournment?
Secondary? Council Davis moved, second by Council Whitmarsh. All those in favor or those carry?